We are back in open session. Chancellor Burke will provide a welcoming greeting.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to our remote board meeting of the South Orange County Community College District. We thank you for your patience as we continue to navigate this virtual platform. We welcome trustees Marcia Milchiker, Tim Jamal, Terri Witt-Rydell, Barbara J., Carolyn Inman, T.J. Prendergast, James Wright, and student trustee Satara Mateen. We welcome members of our district community who are participating virtually and members of the public who are viewing the meeting live via Zoom webinar. Please be advised that everyone participating via Zoom video or call has been muted. Following the meeting, the district will make the recording available on the SOCCCD website. The audio of this meeting is being closed captioned in real time. The board is open to receiving public comments. Pursuant to Governor Newsom's executive order N-15-21 and in compliance with AB 361, the published agenda stated that members of the public requesting to provide comments will be given the opportunity to make public comments directly via remote access and in real time during the meeting. Members of the public wishing to make a comment will be instructed to use the raise hand feature, unmute their audio, and must comply with a two-minute time limit. I would now like to turn the meeting over to trustee Milchiker, who will call the meeting to order.
The February 28, 2022, meeting of the South Orange County Community College District Board of Trustees is hereby called to order. The governing board meeting is conducted pursuant to California Government Code Section 54953, Assembly Bill 361, and Governor Newsom's most recent executive order N 122. Our February board meeting is being broadcast in a hybrid format this month, with some trustees ending in person and some trustees joining us remotely. We welcome students, faculty, district staff, and members of the public who are attending the meeting virtually via Zoom webinar. Were there any items to report on actions taken in closed session?
No, trustee Milchiker, there were no actions taken in closed session.
Okay, thank you so much. So now we will have an invocation led by trustee Inman, followed by a pledge of allegiance led by trustee J.
On Saturday night, the Ukrainian chorus opened their show of Saturday Night Live with the beautiful and powerful song "Prayer for Ukraine." Maxim Shmirkovsky is in Ukraine filming a Dancing with the Versions Ukraine-style. He has been sharing emotional videos from Ukraine, his homeland, and says he will not leave until his friends can leave also. People worldwide are supporting Ukraine, protesting and lighting up buildings. In Moscow, protesters are being arrested. In Ukraine, bravery, courage, inspiration abound. Not only are the men fighting, but many without training and not armed correctly, but people of all ages are also. Women and children are making Molotov cocktails to be pitted against tanks. Mothers tell their children curl up like a turtle, trying to protect them by pretending it's a game. And one of the most moving examples to me was an 80-year-old man showing up with a change of clothes, his toothbrush, and some sandwiches, ready to fight and even die for his country. Their courage is remarkable; their resolve and will are inspiring; their resistance is amazing and surprising. Tonight, I agree with the choir: Pray for Ukraine.
Would you join me in the pledge of allegiance to our wonderful country and to our wonderful flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic to which it stands, one nation under God.
One nation under God, indivisible, indivisible, eternal.
Thank you both. At this time, members of the public wishing to comment on an agenda item or on any other matter of interest to the public that are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the board will be given an opportunity to make a public comment directly via remote access in real time during the meeting. Members of the public wishing to make a comment will be required to use the raise hand feature and will be unmuted and asked to speak. A two-minute time limit for each speaker will be observed. Be advised that the maximum allotment for speakers on any one topic, regardless of the number of speakers, shall be 20 minutes. Are there any public comments at this time?
We have one.
Okay, excellent.
Could I begin my public comment now?
Yes, please.
Awesome, thank you. My name's Apurva Gunti, and I am making a statement on behalf of ASIVC. I serve as a vice president of external affairs, in which I act as a liaison to connect IVC with other colleges. Through a meeting with the External Affairs Committee, the court case pie in the Los Angeles Community College District was brought up. In this case, several blind students sued LACC for not being able to receive the proper accommodations. The judge ruled in favor of the students, even after the case was appealed again by LACC years after the students continued on with their education. However, LACC has decided to place a hold on the case under the guise of the disparate impact theory of discrimination or unintentional discrimination. In other words, LACC refuses to offer the proper accommodations by stating their intentions as unintended and are planning on taking the case up with the Supreme Court. Why is this important? Why am I here talking about it? Well, if this proceeds, it jeopardizes Americans with Disabilities and Rehabilitation Acts, since this is how most acts of discrimination occur. This in turn can be extremely harmful to students with disabilities within both our district and students everywhere. Similarly, it can also affect other civil rights acts if the corresponding thought process is used. ASIVC would seek that the SOCCCD's board provides support by any means they see fit, whether it be by a public statement and/or attending the LACC board's meeting and asking them to settle this case. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comment.
We have another request to speak. Rachel Abalos.
Good evening, Board of Trustees. I am Rachel Abalos, a Senator of Associated Students of Irvine Valley College, and I am a member on our district's chancellor hiring committee for next college school year as well. I would like to add on to Apurva's comment, as I have seen the significant impact that our school district has in helping bridge the gap between disabled students of our community and the workforce or a more accessible society for them to live. I have seen this firsthand as a student of disabled services as well, and I really ask for the district's voice and influence on this matter, as we are a neighboring district to LACC. And if their case goes through the Supreme Court, it would affect our students in our school district, and it would really reverse the hard work that our school district has done to provide those provisions for our disabled students. And I just humbly ask if you could extend your support for our students of our school district and to give a message to LACC that what they're doing is not equitable and not in line with the purpose and responsibility of our California community colleges. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much, and I'd like our administration to look into that.
Hello, my name is Jessica Lopez, and I was born without hands and feet. I'm a first-generation student, triple majoring at Calflan College, and I'm a member of student government because I'm passionate about disability rights. I'm coming here to you today to appeal to you to take action to advocate against the LACC, recent actions against blind disabled students. Under losing a lawsuit that required the LACC to provide accommodations that it failed to provide to blind students earlier, it is going to the Supreme Court to attack the Americans with Disabilities Act by arguing that disabled people who have been victims of unintentional discrimination should not be protected against under the ADA. This case had wide impact against multiple civil rights laws that will impact disabled people, persons of color, and other minorities. As a disabled person myself, I was unable to graduate high school due to policy that impacted me and blocked me from graduating. I now have the privilege of attending college because I was finally given the accommodations that I had requested for years. I am appealing to you to take action to advocate for disabled students in the LACC because education should be available to everyone. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. As I said, I'd like the administration to look into this for us. Thank you.
We have another public comment.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Board of Trustees. I am a student senator of ASIVC. After battling depression and surviving self-harm, I lost most of my fine motor skills, having to redevelop them throughout high school. My passion within computer science is innovative and is non-traditional. The accommodations for disabled students within the computer science field is untouched, similar to the pie in the LACC case. This could impede the possibilities of many students trying to attain an education to better themselves in the future. If we continue to reinterpret the ADA and the 504, we are opening a can of worms, not just for disabled students, but for gender rights, for Title IX, for general discrimination, for gender rights discriminations, for religious discrimination, for anything that requires an interpretation of intentional versus unintentional. The Board of Trustees of the SOCCCD has become a pioneer when it comes to accommodations, when it comes to menstrual equity or the vaccine mandate. I strongly urge you to take a stance and condemn the actions of LACC for the sake of the future students who are trying to get an education. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like the administration to report on it to the boards. Okay, thank you.
We have another.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, my name is Anna Nam. I am the chief justice of the Associated Students of Irvine Valley College. I think our other speakers have said it well, but I will say it again, that a lot of the reason that students choose to attend SOCCCD schools in particular is because of the accommodations that they provide. As a returning non-traditional student, was able to return to IVC smoothly because of the accommodations that IVC provided me. In the same way, a lot of our disabled students get a new opportunity by attending community colleges like Irvine Valley College. So this ruling could potentially be very dangerous for a large percentage of our students in terms of students in our DSPS programs, as well as students who have built friendships and connections with those students as well. I'd also like to emphasize that the LACC Board of Trustees meeting is this Wednesday afternoon. So this is an extremely urgent and pressing idea that needs to be acted on sooner rather than later, as their Board of Trustees is meeting just this Wednesday. But overall, I'd like to echo what my colleagues are saying in terms of the fact that administration and faculty should be at least putting support in their own efforts towards fighting for our students' rights. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
That is it.
Okay, thank you so much for your comments, and the administration is going to report on this to our boards, so we can certainly understand the situation better. Thank you. And now, there are no more public comment reports? So thank you. And right now, we're moving toward oral reports, and the first reports are board reports. And I think I'll start with trustee Prendergast. I'll start on this side.
All right.
Thank you.
I really actually came in with the idea of no report, but then after trustee Inman's invocation statement, I just want to reiterate and show support, and just from a historical perspective, I don't know, it's, you know, the teacher in me, but you may or may not have noticed on the news, a lot of the newscasters keep referring to the capital as Kiev, and you may have your whole life always heard of it as Kiev. Kiev is the Russian pronunciation of the Ukrainian capital, and Kiev is more in tune with Ukrainian pronunciation. So pronouncing it Kiev is more of a show of solidarity with the Ukrainian people. So I'm here tonight to say I support Kiev and the country of Ukraine. Thank you. So in 1996, I led a coalition in Washington, D.C. called the Central and East European Coalition. I had a partnership and collaboration with the Ukrainian National Congress and the Ukrainian-American community in the United States, and we lobbied intensively at the time to get the states of Central and Eastern Europe, including Ukraine, to join NATO in the collapse of the former Soviet Union. And we were successful, in that many of the states of the former Soviet Union, including the Baltic States, Poland, Hungary, Czech Republic, have all joined NATO. What's happened in Ukraine is obviously a tragedy, and I'm sickened by it. The abuses that are taking place, the violations of human rights are something we cannot accept. And I'm happy the world is crying out, as they should, but I wish the world would also cry out in every instance when this happens. And unfortunately, it doesn't always happen that way. And it doesn't always happen when people don't have a state, or they don't have a nation-state, they don't have a UN territory. So I hope that we need to stand up and support Ukraine, defend human rights, and speak out against autocracies. But there are autocracies within NATO today. There are NATO members who are not democratic nations, who commit human rights violations every day in northern Syria and other places around the world. So there's nothing good that's happened from this. I know the unity has been awesome, but there's nothing good about the Russian invasion. But if anything can happen going forward, I think that this is a, hopefully, a prerequisite that the world unites in every case when there are massive human rights violations that are currently taking place. So that's, I liked your invocation very much, and I thank you for bringing it to our attention.
Thank you. Thank you. And trustee J., do you have a board report?
Yeah. Okay. Note, the IVC Foundation announced that they have postponed their gala event celebrating excellence to Thursday, May 5. Alyssa and her team are very busy planning the event that will be fun, engaging, and most importantly, will raise greatly needed funds for the students and programs of IVC. I encourage you all to join me as a sponsor of the event. I am sponsoring the welcome reception. On Tuesday, February 1, I attended the virtual IVC Foundation board meeting, conducted by the president, Mike Drennan. The meeting included a presentation about IVC's international student program, as well as the impact of COVID-19 on our international students. IVC international students are funded primarily through personal and family funds and contribute greatly to the finance of IVC and the local community via their studies. Prior to COVID, they had over 800 international students, but they experienced significant drop in enrollment due to the pandemic. There are currently just 430 international students enrolled. Even under difficult circumstances, such as studying from overseas with time zone challenges, international students continue to excel, with over 170 students transferring to the university in 2021. International students choose IVC due to its strong academic and transfer reputation, and IVC's ranking is one of the safest cities in America. This points to the positive outlook for the growth of the IVC international student enrollment as the pandemic stabilizes. Both the IVC and Saddleback Foundations are doing a wonderful job raising funds to support our students. I'm looking forward to hearing their annual reports tonight at this meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. trustee Inman, do you have a report?
Yes. This month, I would like to focus on legislation. On February 10, I attended the monthly meeting of the Orange County Community Colleges Legislative Task Force, which is made up of the four districts in Orange County: Coast, North Orange, Rancho Santiago, and of course, South Orange County. Our board president, Marcia Milchiker, helped start this group years ago to prevent needless duplication and expenditure of funds and to advocate as a larger voice with more consistency and power. Trustee Milchiker and others realize that unity in legislative positions could be highly effective. The group hears from consultants from both the federal and state levels and educates, influences legislators on behalf of hundreds of thousands of community colleges, attending our 10 community colleges in Orange County. One of the most interesting bills that we discussed on that day is from California Senator Dave Minn. His legislation will require high schools to allow community colleges on campus to promote learning opportunities at job fairs, career days, and other such activities. Right now, high schools can refuse to allow community colleges on campus. When I heard that at the meeting, I was frankly shocked. I couldn't believe that a public school would say another public school could not come and talk about their programs. And Senator Min and many others hope to change that. The second event was the Saddleback College Pre-Law Society Student Program. It was held right here, and the president, Elijah Robles, interviewed the Washington, D.C. congressperson, Mike Levin. Hats off to Elijah, who asked perceptive questions, and to the congressperson, who was very impressive. The students appreciated his passion, his challenging work, his achievements, and his advice. Thank you.
Thank you so much. And next, trustee Wright, do you have a report?
Yes, I do.
Okay, thank you.
There's going to be a National Engineering Week spotlight at Saddleback College. Saddleback College Mars Rover is going to be a team. There are eight students who are trying to take care of this. The faculty advisors are professors Mitch Harari, James Repka, and Tony Huntley, and they'll be doing something on March 4 to do something with the Saddleback Rover. I want to talk about for just a minute, on Thursday, October 3, the Board of Trustees participated in their annual board retreat to review the progress of the 2021 goals and to establish new 2022 goals. The board also reviewed the board survey that assessed the views. Information are available to the public on the district website. And finally, I wanted to know that Dr. Christopher McDonald is to be employed Vice Chancellor of Education and, I'll just say, Education and Technical Plugs Service, effective on March 8, 2021, '22, I'm sorry. Dr. John Herandis, president of Irvine Valley College, was thrilled to have him selected for this important leadership, South Orange County Community College District. We are thankful for the time Chris had dedicated to Irvine Valley College. He began his tenure there as vice president of instruction in 2016, after assignment as vice president for instructional effectiveness at Saddleback College. He first joined Saddleback College in 2012 as the dean of mathematics, science, and engineering. He'll be a great dean, I'm sorry, he'll be a great vice chancellor. Thank you.
Thank you. A lot of good things happening, very good things, excellent things. Thank you. Trustee Witt-Rydell, do you have a board report?
Yes, I do. On the 17th of February, I attended the Saddleback Foundation meeting, and it was very informative. I'd like to share a fun topic. The faculty representative, she shared her introduction to the new building that is opening, the ATAS Building, and her enthusiasm was contagious. And I'm hoping that all of the foundation will be able to visit the new site. It is remarkable. It's very well done. Also, there's more information about the foundation, but tonight, our executive director, Elizabeth McCain, is going to do a presentation, so I'll let it up to her. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. And trustee Witt-Rydell, now I'll give my report. First, I would like to welcome back staff and students back to Saddleback College and Irvine Valley College. It's so nice to have you back on campus. I attended the CCLC Board Chair Workshop and then the Ledge Conference in Sacramento, and I want to thank Chancellor Burke for noting in her board report that at every single meeting I was at, I distributed flyers about my CCCT candidacy and flyers about our search for a chancellor. But every trustee I spoke with were already running themselves for the CCC board, CCC board. And in reality, there's only two openings in the state this year, so we'll have to see what happens. At that meeting, it was a very excellent meeting, they gave out these books called "A College for All Californians: The History of All Community Colleges." It's written by George Boggs and Larry Galizia, and I brought one of these for every person in the room and every trustee and the college presidents, because I think it's really important to understand the history of the community college. And I also brought "A Fiscal Responsibility for Board Members" and a trustee handbook for any trustee that would like these. I have them here. In addition, I attended the South Orange County Economic Coalition at the San Juan Community Center. I sat next to Israel Dominguez from Saddleback College, and I learned a little bit more about CTE programs at Saddleback College. I learned that Saddleback College had the most extensive virtual classes in the state prior to the pandemic, and we were ready to serve the students when the pandemic started. And I took my very first class, Emeritus Institute class, in person this past Friday. It was a watercolor class. Maria Kernan, the professor, was so kind to the students, and the students were so kind to each other and me, and it was wonderful to be back. And all these Emeritus students were just so happy to be in the room together with other students. I love the Emeritus Institute, and I will keep fighting for it, even though I lost most in Laguna Woods. I too attended the Pre-Law Society with trustee Inman, and I too stand in solidarity with my Ukrainian friends and with President Zelensky, and thank you for that nice invocation, trustee Inman. Thank you. Okay, now, Satara Mateen, do you have a board report, our wonderful student trustee?
Yeah, so I agree. I think trustee Inman did a great job in her invocation, and I think everyone's heart goes out to Ukraine. I also think that trustee Jamal made a really great point that, you know, there are massive human rights violations everywhere, but unfortunately, it's not, you know, people don't talk about it, and there's not enough support. But I did want to congratulate both campuses for finally getting back in person, and there's so many, like, events going on, or student governments are really involved, as we can see from, like, the public comments, they really do want to support. see from like, the public comments, they really do want to support our students, and as a pre-law society member at Saddleback, it was really cool to have Congressman Mike Levin's as our guest speaker, and yeah.
Thank you, thank you so much, student trustee Sotera Mateen. And now we're going to the Associated Government Reports. We have Sam Lockhart from Saddleback and D'Angelo Hunter from IVC, are you here?
So I'm Sam Lockhart tonight.
Okay, good, hello, Sam.
Good evening from ASG. Due to a class conflict, I regret, I must once again be a voice without a face in this meeting. With any good fortune, I should be able to, at last shake your hands come graduation on May 26th, if conditions permit. I'm pleased to report that the parking lots are full again, once again full, and the smiles are frequent, as people once again walk the Saddleback grounds. I credit President Stern, academic senate president Lovett, Chancellor Burke, and all of you for listening to your efforts to facilitate this successful return, for all of you listening and for your efforts to facilitate this successful return to campus. The response has been enormously positive, and it's good to be back. ASG is looking to host several events in the later months of the semester, specifically to highlight traditionally underrepresented communities in the months of March and April, which as you likely know are respectively Women's History and Diversity Equity and Inclusion Month. We are in talks to organize club fairs in the near future. We also wish to thank the Saddleback Foundation for providing scholarships to students in need. We stand in solidarity with ASIVC in regards to the PAN versus LACCD issue. Although I take pride in Saddleback's active initiatives to bring voices to traditionally underrepresented groups, as a representative of the students, I cannot overlook the threat to equity that the court issue presents. Students regardless of disability, gender identity, or ethnicity should have access to the education that they desire. I am inspired by the voices within our camps and campus and district administration that work to make Saddleback a beacon of opportunity, and I add this here in the interest of highlighting both of our schools as such a paragon of equal rights and access. Our approach to inclusion is just one of the many reasons why I'm, I am proud to be a Bobcat. Sam Lockhart.
Great, thank you, and thank you. And then D'Angelo Hunter from IVC?
Hello, hello, everyone. Two minutes, all right, cool. I'm going to get right into this, because there's kind of a lot. First off, I want to highlight the IVC Foundation. ASIVC will be taking part as we sponsor the table, so if you're attending, we hope to see you there, and also, we would encourage that you do go in support of scholarships and acknowledging student success, a way provides great acknowledgement. I enjoyed it greatly when I got those scholarships. Our first Welcome Week back, we had over 150, I believe we had over 200 students come, and we had an in-and-out trip during Welcome Week. So during Club Day, my bad, during Club Day, we had an in-and-out trip come in, and we had gave out over 200 burgers and whatnot, so that was amazing. And then our Welcome Week is a lot of booths, a lot of energy, a lot of dancing going on, so that was awesome. And then we had our Black History Month event with Ty Scott King, who did kind of a spoken word event. Right now, I just want to highlight our women's basketball team, who just received their fourth in a row conference title in the Orange Empire Conference. They are number four in the state and number one in Southern California, so congrats to them. And then going into like, some of the advocacy that we've been doing, we submitted four resolutions to the SSC for consideration at the state level. One is to highlight sustainability, transparency in reports, and also other sustainable practices. Another one is a Sillipide Resolution to provide better transparency to student services and rights, including rate grievances and nine plus one rights. Another resolution was a pronoun inclusive, inclusivity resolution, to allow students to be able to change their pronouns on district digital environments. And lastly, one to lower the GI Bill requirements to allow transitioning veterans to better access their GI Bill benefits, to assist with their transition. And then just to comment on the Pion, Pion versus LACCD, this is a call to action, and what, the reason why there's so much support and public comments for this, March 3rd is the last day we have to act on this, because that's when their Board of Trustees decides whether or not they want to escalate this case to the next level, and that would be the Supreme Court. We are wanting to keep this out of the court system to avoid any sort of precedence of a case, if it does succeed, but also to remove, the kind of like, the stomping around in a legal field that is supposed to protect students, instead of being trying to, trying to take advantage of technicalities within the law. So we're hoping that our, our advocacy here, our public comments, we're hoping for additional support as we approach their Board of Trustees to help, to ask them to also dismiss this case. Thank you for your time, and sorry for going over.
Thank you, sounds like the student governments are doing incredible work and getting a lot done, and I, I have asked for more information about this issue from administration to our, to our board right away, so we understand the situation. Thank you. Thank you for your comment. And now the Irvine Valley College Academic Senate, Danielle DeRoule.
Good evening trustees, and good evening Chancellor Burke. First, I am glad to report on what for many IVC students was their first week on campus. I think it's safe to say that they seem happy to be in classrooms and not in front of Zoom screens, and my faculty colleagues at IVC are happy for the opportunity to see their faces and welcome them either back to campus or onto a college campus for the very first time. Anecdotally, over half of my college composition students had never been to the IVC campus before attending my class, and I've seen staff and faculty conducting impromptu campus tours this week to welcome them to a new kind and mainly non-electronic college experience. In short, we're all happy to be back. And on behalf of our faculty, I'd like to thank the board for making difficult decisions over the last two years to ensure the health and well-being of the IVC and Saddleback communities. I'd also like to take a moment to publicly thank before the Board of Trustees, Dr. Chris McDonald, for his five and a half years of service at Irvine Valley College, and to congratulate him on his new role as Vice Chancellor of Educational and Technology Services. Chris came to IVC during difficult times of institutional change, followed by a pandemic, and his strong and gracious leadership is something that my faculty colleagues and I will long be thankful for. Thank you, Chris, and we will miss you. Finally, Dr. Emily Liu, Professor in the Department of English and Honors Program Director, who has been nominated IVC Teacher of the Year by a vote of our campus's students, deserves recognition tonight as well. Over and over again, in testimonials written to the nominating committee, her students praised Dr. Liu's commitment to them as future scholars and as individuals. They cited feeling more prepared for transferring to a four-year school and being better scholars after being under her tutelage. And during a time when students have struggled because of the disruptions COVID-19 has caused in their work, families, and personal lives, Dr. Liu's students praised her personal care for them, her guidance, and her assurance. Congratulations to Dr. Liu. Thank you trustee Inman for your thoughtful invocation addressing the war in the Ukraine at the beginning of our public session tonight. Thank you trustees for hearing my report and for your continued work on behalf of both our district's colleges.
Thank you, I, our staff is so wonderful to our students that it just brings tears to my eyes, so thank you so much. And next will be Saddleback College Academic Senate, Professor Margot Lovett.
Thank you, President Milchiker. Tonight, I'd like to report on some of the truly exciting things that are happening campus-wide around issues of equity and inclusion. Saddleback faculty are working hard to ensure that all students, regardless of gender, racial or ethnic identity, sexual orientation, class status, or disability, can meet their goals and succeed in our classes. Toward that end, we have developed teaching resources, such as the Toolkit for Culturally Responsive Teaching and Learning, and the Library Guide on Implicit or Unconscious Bias. We have created professional development opportunities for faculty in the form of the Equity Core Course and the Equity in Online Education Course. Discussions among faculty in divisions and departments across campus have led to instituting practices in our classes that have resulted in equal success rates for students in online and face-to-face classes. SALT, the Saddleback Arts Leadership Team, held a Professional Development Week session on Equity in the Arts, and hosted a Day of the Dead celebration, which brought community members onto campus. Faculty have attended webinars on topics ranging from visions for racially literate faculty to the elephant we don't see, a diversity dialogue. We have participated in the Racial Equity Facilitator Training Program and the Humanizing Online STEM Academy. We continue to increase the number of courses that have zero textbook cost or utilize open educational resources. We have established communities of practice to foster more equitable outcomes for students in transfer-level English and math. Our STEM Core Expansion Grant focuses on bringing more underrepresented students into STEM education and career pathways. We are working hard to meet our equity goals, and this will continue to be a primary focus of the Academic Senate and the faculty of Saddleback College. Thank you.
Thank you, exactly, two minutes, wonderful. The colleges are just doing wonderful things, and the faculty are doing incredible things, so thank you so much. And then next, Faculty Association, Professor Louis Long?
Thank you, President Milchiker. My report won't be quite as long. I'd like to acknowledge the contributions of two retiring faculty members from IVC, Seth Hochwald, who has been a member of our faculty for almost 39 years and is retiring this sem- at the end of the semester, and Fontaine Rivera, who has been both a valued member of the faculty and also a valued member of the Faculty Association and has served on our rep council, has represented us at numerous conferences and has been very important. I'd also like to join President DeRoule in thanking Chris McDonald for his thoughtful, intelligent, open process in working with the faculty in order to establish a very welcoming environment and well-thought-out, well-planned academic program on our campus. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you so much. I know you're really going to miss Dr. Chris McDonald at Irvine Valley College. He was very important there, but he will do really good work for our district up here, so we're excited about having him. Okay, the next, Irvine Valley College Classified Senate, Desiree Ortiz.
Good evening, thank you so much, President Milchiker. Good evening, Board and Chancellor. Like many, we were very excited to welcome back our students. Classified were out in full front of the campus with several welcome booths across the campus to welcome our students. So that was very exciting, and the caring, our culture of caring campus, we as Classified Senate are planning in-person professional development for our classified. And we're very excited, on March 17th, we will be holding our first in-person half-day professional development lunch, thanks to the support of President Hernandez. We will be giving our caring campus ambassadors awards out in person. We will also be inviting our campus safety and our health and wellness center out, just to give some tips and reassurance to our classified. It's a way of reuniting our classified and welcoming back on campus. We also are going to start providing, Classified with a technology series, lunch series, starting in the week of spring break, to provide our classified with tools that they may have forgotten that they needed back while in, on campus. So we're very excited to be back, and just welcoming our classified and making sure that they have the tools they need to best serve our students. Also want to give a very warm thank you to Dr. McDonald, Chris McDonald, for always providing the support to our classified professionals at IVC. We are going to miss them. Thank you.
Sure you will. Okay, thank you so much, our classified are wonderful, and our faculty are wonderful, so thank you. There probably isn't anyone from Saddleback Classified Senate, right? So at this point, this California School Employees Association, Scott Ferguson-Green, is he, no? The Police Officers Association, Bo- Bo- Arbuthnot, no? And next, are there any board requests for reports? Okay, so at, at, at this time, the, the reports are over, and right now, we're conducting a public hearing to solicit input regarding the composition of the trustee areas. So I think we have a, a staff member that's going to talk to us about this, our consultant, isn't that correct?
He's being promoted right now.
Okay.
While, while they're promoting him, do you want to do the public hearing?
Yeah, I'll do the public hearing, sounds good. So while we're waiting for the, the consultant, I'll start the public hearing. We are now at Board Agenda Item 5.1, to conduct a public hearing to consider the adoption of redistricting map number three. I would like to officially open the public hearing for board mem- for Board Item 5.1. The public hearing on the matter at hand is now open. Before we have the public hearing, Chancellor Burke will provide an introduction.
The agenda item pertains to a public hearing and presentation for the redistricting update as it relates to the voting areas and trustee elections in the South Orange County Community College District. This is the seventh and final public hearing in the redistricting process.
We will now move to Item 5.2, Redistricting Presentation. For the presentation, we will hear from Paul Mitchell of Redistricting Partners. Mr. Mitchell, the floor is yours.
Thank you very much. I'm Paul Mitchell with Redistricting Partners, and happy to be with you here tonight. This should be pretty simple presentation, if we can go to the first slide. The redistricting process, for those who are coming to this for the first time, is a process that's done every 10 years by every agency that has by election, or by district elections, so everything from Congress to city council, Orange County supervisors did this, all the cities in the county that have elections by district are doing this, and community college districts that have by district elections are doing this. And we can go to the next slide. When we draw districts, we can't just kind of willy-nilly draw districts throughout the agency. We actually have to ensure that the districts are meeting certain requirements, the first requirement of which is the districts be equally sized. That sounds simple. We have to use equal populations based on the decennial census, the April 1st, 2020 National Census, and we look at the data all the way down to the census block level for every area within the district in order to build districts from that census count and ensure that they're equal size. Now, they don't have to be perfectly equal sized like a congressional district, they just need to be relatively equal size, and for that, we use a 10% buffer, that no district is more than 10% larger than the next district, or than the smallest district. So you can think if districts had to be 100 people each, you could have one district that was 95 and another one that was 105, and based on the federal law and court cases, that would be considered equal, sufficiently equal for the purposes of redistricting. Districts need to be contiguous, meaning they need to be whole parts, they need to be quote-unquote compact, which in some states is a real mathematical question. In California, it's more qualitative, it looks at our populations, nearby populations in the same district, that would be compact. If you had a population and avoided a bunch of nearby populations and went to some far away population, that would not be considered compact. In redistricting, we want to maintain communities of interest. That can be people who have a shared experience or need or relationship with the agency, it can be a socioeconomic, or even cultural, or ethnic. We need to make sure that we're not drawing districts with an eye completely or just on racial composition, but we can look at other characteristics, and one real key one, particularly in community colleges, is how a, the full area of the district sees itself within either the underlying school districts, if there's a relationship there, or even cities. Being able to identify which district you're in, based on which city you're in, is a reasonable way to draw districts. Next slide. The current lines are what the board is currently elected under, so each of the current trustees were elected under these lines. So, each of the current trustees were elected under these lines, but since the last time they were drawn, the population has greatly changed. If we go to the next slide, you'll see that where I talked about that buffer, that one district is at 105, the other is at 95, that's equal enough. Well, the buffer in the current lines is over 70%. So, you can think of, you know, more than two-thirds of an entire district's difference between the smallest and the largest district. So, that is wildly outside of what would be acceptable and definitely something that's going to require significant changes in order to bring that deviation down to under 10%. And when we talk about under 10%, it doesn't just mean over by 5%, under by 5%, but that's kind of a nice kind of way to think about it sometimes. And notice that even if we went in and fixed District 5, which is under by 25%, and District 6, which is over by almost 50%, even if we waved a magic wand and fixed these districts and made them perfect, look at the remaining districts. Even if we got rid of those, you would still have a total plan deviation of around 19 or 20%. And if we got those districts fixed, then you'd still have districts that are out by about 18%. So, the reality of your redistricting is, you know, almost no district can go without having some touching of that district in order to balance population. The only district probably that doesn't have to have to have to be significantly changed would be District Number 1. As you can see, it's at 3.5% over, which from a starting point is a much better starting point than where the other districts are at from just a redistricting perspective. Now, if we go to the next slide, we have done multiple draft plans, and Draft Plan 3 is the one that has been moved forward to this final hearing. This final hearing really is an up or down vote on one plan that's been public for seven days. The law is created to require this seven-day window, so the public has access to the map that the board is going to consider. And the board is restricted from, say, picking a new map tonight or going out and finding somebody else to create a new map tonight. Right now, you are in a position where you've had this one map that has been public on the website and that the community has known that this is something that you're going to be adopting, and this is the one thing that you can vote on tonight. The maps have been provided, both in the packets, like the PDF packets you can print out with all the data tables, and also a web-based tool so that you can zoom in and actually look a specific address. If we go to the next slide, this is Draft Plan 3, which is your final plan after it's been revised and using numbers instead of letters. If we go to the next slide, this is the overlay with the current lines. I said initially, District 1 was one that probably didn't have to change as much. It did make some adjustments in basically balancing, helping some of the other districts balance a little bit. You can see that District 4 stayed relatively same in terms of its general shape. The more significant changes, as is true oftentimes in redistrictings, was as you get towards the middle of the plan, we're really trying to balance out this, like I said, over 70% deviation and needing to make significant changes. So, you can see District 5 is now part of three other districts. District 3 is part of three other districts. District 6 is actually part of four previous districts, and District 7 is part of three previous districts. So, more significant change there as a result, largely of the need to balance for a population. And then, as we're doing it, trying to follow other existing boundaries like city boundaries or school district boundaries. If we go to the next slide, this is the map that shows the cities, and you can see like, okay, what separates District 5 and 6? Well, largely, that separation is the border of Irvine. You can see areas in which we followed the top of Ranch of Santa Margarita for the top of District 7, or captured the bottom of Liderem Ranch or kept San Juan Capistrano hole. These are things that we were able to do within the process of drawing lines. And clearly, not everybody's wish could be granted in a redistricting process because largely, like I said, that need to keep districts equally balanced. But we did go through multiple public hearings. We did talk about each of these areas and how the districts would be shaped within the acceptable criteria of keeping districts equally populated, looking at communities of interest, using city and school district boundaries. And I feel like we've gotten to a point where this is one map that was able to move to this final hearing and that you are now able to adopt. If we go to the next slide, the total plan deviation now is 6.2%. That took a lot of work, but this 6.2% is well within that 10% buffer and allows you to have a plan that would be legally compliant. Next slide. The packets, if you want to get them from the website, actually go through and do show individual districts with the individual data tables as to their total population and ethnic breakdown, and also importantly, the ethnic breakdown of the citizen voting age population, which is a measure of eligible voters for any kind of Voting Rights Act concerns. And go to the next slide. Where we're at is we are at the end of the process. Today, throughout the day, we've been working with county offices of education throughout the state to make sure that each of the community colleges is meeting their February 28th deadline. This deadline is not a deadline for the county registrar. It's not a deadline for getting the maps done so that you can file for office. It's a deadline going back to kind of the history of the community college system where it used to be a part of the K-12 system. And there's still this rule that the County Committee on School Organization needs to acknowledge and identify the redistricting plan that you've adopted, or they could have the ability to draw the lines for you. So, to avoid that, we have already talked to the Orange County Committee on School Organization, which is a separate entity from the Orange County Department of Education or the Education Board, and let them know that they'll be receiving these files either tonight or tomorrow morning based on your final vote. But if they were not able to receive those, then theoretically, they could decide to draw lines for you. We will also be transmitting these to the county registrars so they can be effective for your next election. And with that, I think that's the end of the presentation. You can go to the next slide, and that's it. So, I'm happy to answer any questions, but tonight's task is relatively simple.
Are there any questions now?
Just a... You have a motion, I can comment. I think I said at the last meeting, I don't really like any of the three options that much, but I think the process got started a little clunky, and we had to play a little bit catch-up. And like everyone else, I look at my current area, and I'm disappointed that Mission Viejo has been carved up. I think there could have been a way to keep Mission Viejo together. And, but, you know, I think it got too far along in the process, and I felt like if I started advocating for that, then that has a somewhat of a domino effect to impact the entire process. So, I only wish we had gotten started a little crisper on this. I know we had requested more detailed maps earlier. It took some time for us to get those maps, but, you know, Paul, I know you indicated we're at the end of the road, so we don't really have much of a choice at this point. So, I will end up voting in favor of it.
Are there any other comments? Yeah, I also will end up voting in favor of it, but I also think it...
Point of order, you need to make a motion before you discuss the item.
Yeah, you're right. So, do I have a motion and a second?
So moved.
Okay, Trustee Pendergast makes a motion and Trustee Inman has a second? Okay. I felt it started kind of clunky. We didn't get the maps until like late in November, and then we, anyway, I thought it was clunky also. And I, I just remember starting to, when I first ran for the board and when I started on the board, I was just, I was, I learned that the Emeritus Institute was going to be disbanded totally. None of the community colleges would have an Emeritus Institute anymore because there wasn't enough funding for it and there wasn't any. So, this was prior to AB 1725, so I organized all these people to go to all these hearings all over LA and everywhere, and we brought these Emeritus students from Laguna Woods, and they spoke passionately about their program. And in the end, John Vasconcello said, "I'm putting together my bill, AB 1725, and I'm going to have the young 17-year-old student and the returning woman who's 25 or 30 or 40 coming back, and those Emeritus students who need these classes to help them get funding, keep their brains and bodies sound, and keep going, and certainly make, be able to support themselves." So, I felt so proud of that. So, I'm going to have to say goodbye to many of my Laguna Woods constituents, and I'll say hello to my Lake Forest constituents, and we'll be good friends, and I'm looking forward to meeting you and working with you. So, that's all I can say right now. Are there any other comments from anybody else?
Yeah, I just, I mean, we're going to talk a little bit later about the voting by district instead of at-large. And I know that one of the arguments is that there's a sense that by going by area, you're only representing those people, but I think some of you are not realizing, you still represent the whole district. You're still supposed to be looking out for all seven districts, not just the one you are representing. So, the only time it really comes to fruition is when obviously, if you're running for reelection, that you're reaching out to a specific group of people. And it isn't that you can't still represent the Emeritus and you still can't represent the members of Laguna Woods. I feel like I will still represent the members of Laguna Woods, and I've never lived close to that area. So, I just, I just hope everyone doesn't lose sight that you're still representing for the entire district.
Yeah, I would hope, I would hope everybody else, everybody still thinks that they represent the whole district, not just be, you know, kind of insular and just only represent the people that they vote in.
It is, it is a major change, and it does, I mean, it's obvious what's happening is that only a certain number of our residents and constituents will be voting for us going forward. And that's a monumental change. We're a multi-college, multi-campus district. The new, this new pattern of voting doesn't really fit well with us, but we're not a city. We have multiple jurisdictions within this district, including two separate colleges. So, and a very large independent, not independent campus, a very large campus in Tustin. So, I don't think this is the right structure for the district, for our kind of multi-college district, but we are where we are, and we need to do our best.
Yeah. I do feel that, you know, we talked about, I think Paul talked about not carving up communities of interest, and I think of the community of interest, there's nothing more of a community of interest. Well, there are many, but one of them would be Laguna Woods, where it's the oldest city in the country and the youngest city in the, because it's one of the newest cities and the oldest by age-wise city in the country and with the wall around it and clubhouses. So, that definitely community of interest, and I kind of hate to see that carved up, but I think we have to move on now because we're at that point now that we have to turn it in by March the 1st, I believe. So, I think we have to move forward with this. Are there any other comments? Okay.
Yeah, just move forward.
I just want to say that when I had studied this regarding K-12 and different people, different groups, one of the advantages is, I believe, that there's this, I don't actually know if this has been, if this has been, if this has actually happened after people, you know, did make this decision. But I believe that it will probably encourage more people to run because it won't be as expensive. And I think that it's been crazy to run, you know, with such a large, large area. Many people just won't do it. They might make great board members, but they just, you know, how many people have that kind of money to be able to do that? So, anyway, I hope for the best, although, you know, my town was split up too, but, you know, I think it's going to work. We're going to make it work.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments? Okay. Okay, thank you for that presentation. If any members of the public wish to address the board on this item, please use the raise hand feature, and you will be unmuted and asked to speak. Also note that comments are not to exceed two minutes. Have there been any comments? The interesting thing is there's never been any comments from anyone on this whole process, and we've had six hearings, and the public just probably doesn't...
This is the seventh.
Oh, this is the seventh. This is the seventh, this is our seventh public hearing, and we're only required to have five, I think. So, and so...
Shows how much they trust us.
Oh, they trust, they trust our judgment. So, that's wonderful. Okay, thank you. And I'm also a team player, and I'm going to vote yes because I think I'm a really good board member, and I bring board members together. I try to do that, so I'm going to vote yes. Okay. Is there any further discussion on this matter by any other member of the Board of Trustees? No? See, no further public comment or discussion from the board. The public hearing is now closed, okay? Now, do we, we vote on that item, right?
Yes.
Yes.
There's been a motion.
So, there's been a motion and a second, so Madam Secretary, can you please call the roll?
Trustee Inman.
Aye.
Trustee Jay.
Aye.
Trustee Jamal.
Aye.
Trustee Milchiker.
Aye.
Trustee Prendergast.
Aye.
Trustee Whit Rydel.
Aye.
Trustee Wright.
Aye.
Student trustee Mateen.
Okay, so it was passed. Thank you.
Paul pushed the send button.
We will. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. And so, next, what we're moving, if everyone agrees, we're moving Item 8.1, which is legislative priorities, to the next agenda item because our people in Washington DC is three hours later, and we don't want to keep them up past 3:00, 4:00 in the morning. So, this is the annual discussion with the Board of Trustees with the federal and state advocates regarding the legislative schedule. So, at first, do we have our, maybe a Capital Advocacy Partners, because they're in Washington DC, and they, it's three hours later for them. So, do you have a presentation? This would be Dana DeBohmont, Amanda Fenton, and Dante Moreno of Capital Advocacy Partners. They are lobbyists and are friends in Washington DC.
And Honorable Trustees, I don't know if it's okay for me to just introduce the item very quickly. As you know, we usually have this legislative presentation annually. So, you know Dana and Amanda very well with Capital Advocacy Partners, and I appreciate you indulging them early based on the time difference. But they also have added a staff member, Dante, who will be joining us this evening, and she is a new staff member with CAPS. So, you will be hearing from her this evening, and then following CAPS presentation will be SES with our state update. Thank you.
Oh, thank you. That's Latisha. I didn't know who that was.
Yeah.
I'm saying, who was that speaking? Hi, Latisha.
Hi.
Yeah, that's right. Thank you, right.
Can you hear me?
Yes, yes, yes.
Thank you for giving us the opportunity to present again tonight. President Milchiker and the Board of Trustees, we're honored to continue serving you and hope that we continue to make an impact on your behalf. As you know, we're your advocates in DC, where we build relationships and really engage on behalf of the colleges and the district. Earlier this year, we had virtual meetings. Well, last year, we had virtual meetings with our representatives, and we're scheduling those meetings again for our representatives to begin to engage them. We work and we update on grant activities and federal funding results. We share with the decision-makers kind of what we've been doing and keep an open and ongoing dialogue. We submitted six community project requests of them. The saving, by the district, the saving veterans with intervention pilot programs looks to be included in the pending FY '22 Appropriations Bill. It is 630,000 divided evenly by the colleges. It's submitted by Senator Feinstein. We've been working with the both colleges to get ready. Once a final appropriations bill is passed, we believe, the weekend of March 11th, 12th, or 13th, we're ready to get started and move that fund forward. We're also, we're actively engaged in legislation, and we track legislation on behalf of the district this year. The district sent six position letters, and we're happy to report that the Veterans Remote Act was signed into law in December. We work on grant support, notification of funding. opportunities, agency engagement and support. We help with your minority-serving institution grants, including waivers and application support. And last year, we supported the federal agenda for the Orange County Legislative Community College Legislative Task Force. So we like to stay really busy and and really focus on the results. I'll go ahead and let Amanda touch base on where we're going in the next fiscal year. Calendar year. Go ahead, Amanda.
Wonderful. And if we could get the next slide, Letitia. Thank you very much. So the first big item on the calendar for 2022 is actually wrapping up some unfinished business from the 2021 calendar year. So we're expecting that, as Dana indicated, the final fiscal 22 budget will finally pass in mid-March. They might end up with a day or two continuing resolution because their deadline is on a Friday, and they don't tend to pass things until they need to when the federal government opens again on Monday. So we are expecting that it will get through. And as Dana mentioned, that does have the appropriations funding for the veterans programs at both colleges. I wanted to highlight particularly two pieces that are in this other policy areas. Because it is an election year, we are not anticipating significant legislative action from Congress. But we wanted to highlight two areas for you where we might see some movement. The first is these is higher education regulations. So at the end of last year, the Department of Education started a negotiating rule-making process on two big pieces of higher education legislations. The first big piece related to student loans. They wrapped up that process at the end of the year without reaching consensus on most major issues. So that means that this year, the Department of Education will go ahead and issue regulations on those issues. So we'll have a public comment process for that, and then those regulations will be wrapped up by the end of the calendar year. The second big area of those negotiated regulations relates to a variety of different accountability and institutional quality pieces, most notably the rules to implement the change in the ninety-ten rule regarding financial aid and veterans benefits, as well as the gainful employment and ability to benefit rules. They are not anticipated to reach consensus on either the ninety-ten rule or the gainful employment rules, based on kind of where those initial conversations have gone. But that process will wrap up its negotiated rulemaking at the end of this month, and then we'll we'll see where they are on the consensus. So I wanted to highlight that for you particularly today. Also, just because Build Back Better was a prominent piece of legislation last year, this year, we're not anticipating that that will move forward as a package, but we might see continuing pieces being kind of picked off and put into either some of the budget proposals or other pieces of legislation. Most of the pieces that impacted community colleges do not look particularly viable for this calendar year. So I just wanted to be realistic about that. PFAS is also getting a lot of attention in Congress, a number of hearings, number of legislative actions. So that's something that we just continue to keep an eye out for the district. And now I will turn it back over to Dana.
Next slide. So so in so for 2022, we know that there's a handful of things that we're already planning to focus on. One is the Department of Labor Strengthening Community College Training Grant, the the ANAPIZI, HSI, NSF, and STEM Education. Those are our grants that we're focused on. We're putting we're currently in talks with the colleges to submit the FY23 Community College Community Project Request. We are expecting this process to move quickly in in the end of March, once we approve this congressional this federal year. And the administrative administration apologies, we expect to include equity, community college, and workforce training, CTE. And so we aren't expecting much change from what's already been out there. And I'll let Dante Moreno of our team, who you get like weekly updates and hearings from, go ahead and touch base on the congressional maps and redistricting.
Uh, next slide, please, Letitia. Oh, good evening. As has been mentioned, we are headed into a midterm election year with the first primary being held tomorrow in Texas. As of this morning, thirty House Democrats are planning to retire, which is a thirty-year high. This number is likely to grow in the weeks to come. These retirements set the Democrats up to have an even more contentious midterm election cycle, and Republicans are currently expected to take over both the House and the Senate. Part of this is due to the once-in-a-decade national congressional redistricting. South Orange congressional districts have been affected. Currently, South Orange is represented by Congress members Levin, Porter, and Steele. Starting in the midterm elections, South Orange will be located in newly drawn districts that are currently represented by Congress members Kim and Porter, with Reps Correa and Mike Levin representing some of the jurisdiction as well. Please let us know if you have any questions about that.
We're happy to answer any questions after right now regarding the whole presentation or after the state folks go, whatever is your preference.
Do the people do they want to ask questions now or later? I I have a question.
Why don't we do it now? It's probably because when it's fresh, and then we can let them go to bed.
I I have a question. What are you doing with the SALT, the state and local tax deductions?
That's supposed to be my question.
Oh, okay.
I'm kidding. You can ask.
You ask it. Okay.
Joking.
I mean, what are you doing with that? I know it's it's a problem in California, New York, and other high high tax districts, high tax states. So what can you tell us?
Yeah, it was it was actually it was almost included in the final Build Back Better compromise. So we were very close to actually getting that fixed in driven by representatives in California, and then also New Jersey is one of the big states that their congressional delegation is really pushing a fix. So when the Build Back Better compromise fell apart, unfortunately, that also came out of the conversations. So that's the current status. We were hoping to get some indication in the State of the Union tomorrow as to what some of those priorities might be. The current situation in the Ukraine has obviously put kind of what that speech is going to look like and how many domestic policy pieces are in it in a bit of a question mark. So we we continue to outreach, and the district has taken a strong position and represented what our members of the district's position on the SALT issue.
Okay, thank you. Why do you think twenty-nine House Democrats are retiring now?
It's actually thirty-eight now. So that's that's.
Wow, what's going on?
Yeah.
What's going I I because it's the midterm election, and usually it 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 goes the other way? Is that it?
I I I would speculate there are a couple factors. The midterm election is certainly one of those items, just because traditionally, the midterms do tend to go the opposite as to the presidential election before. Redistricting is absolutely playing a role in this, particularly so if we look nationally, districts as a whole are getting more concentrated in their political affiliations. So much fewer sling districts, much fewer contentious districts, and, you know, based on kind of where the Democrats came in in twenty eighteen in those midterms, a lot of those district seats are even more challenging than they were before. But I'll let Dante or or Dana also give their thoughts on it. Dante, you know, has looked into this issue in great detail.
I would say one other big issue is a lot of Congress members just don't feel that bipartisanship is a huge part of this Congress, and they feel it's easier for them to leave now. Dana, any other thoughts?
Yeah, it's just a very different D.C. than what it used to be. It's very partisan. It's very difficult to get things done. And quite frankly, it's not as fun anymore. And so if, you know, this is if if your district has changed, or, you know, some people are just tired of it. So it's it's very different. And we're looking, you know, I think we're gonna see more back and forth than even before in terms of the Republican and Democratic remaining in control.
Are there any other questions?
Well, I think some of it's age. There are a lot of some of them are, you know, older, have been into members of Congress for many years. So I think that's another big factor why you're seeing some retirements. You lost the bet on SALT, Dana. I don't know what you can't do anything for me because it's not allowed, but I I told you it was not going to happen. And and so.
We were so close.
So close. Eventually, eventually, I do think it's gonna happen. And it might just be for a period, like so many years or whatever. But it's it's something that is it's the the real question was, they saw it as helping the rich, whereas when the cost of living is very different in somewhere like California versus Montana or Idaho, it's very, you know, it's hard to show really the difference and bring, you know, the poverty and the cost of living into it. People just don't understand it.
And the cost of gasoline and and a lot of other things, you know.
So I just had a couple of questions. I mean, you said under well, on the slide right now, it says IVC likely located in California forty-seven. Why did you say likely? I mean, I think it is.
That refers to the yeah, it's the it's the incumbent. So it it's because this is a new district, we're not, we can't be certain that Representative Kim will.
Oh, I thought you meant the college itself. You mean.
No, apologies. Yeah.
Oh, okay.
The representative. The district is set. It's the the representative might.
Likely it's just in the wrong place.
Yeah. It was like, whoa. So where do you see going forward? Where are the, you know, election year, you know, partisan unfortunate events overseas are are taking hold of rightly so. But what are our opportunities going forward, Dana, you know, in in D.C. this year? And then even if, as predicted, the House flips, I mean, are the priorities, you think, gonna change? For us?
I think that, you know, the programs that we're interested in, as a whole, the minority-serving institutions and and strengthening community college and stuff remain priorities. I mean, the training, the retraining of workforce, the things the districts are interested in really are gonna remain a difference is like, for example, apprenticeships. With the Democratic-controlled legislature, who controls the apprenticeships and how they're formed and where the funding goes is probably very different than under like where Trump put it through like the National Restaurant Association and the different businesses.
The IRAPs versus the registered apprenticeships, right?
Yes, absolutely. Absolutely. And it and it looks like Saddleback may actually in one of its community college, community project requests, be looking at an apprenticeship model. We we see it's not like a lot of differences. We'd like to get SALT done. Clearly, if there's the takeover, as we think, SALT may be delayed again. We'll have to see. There's gonna be a handful of pieces of legislation move in the in the coming months. And, you know, there's always a possibility or a formal former tax bill or something. They're looking at another COVID bill, different things like that. There's always a possibility that something become a vehicle. PFAS is very a lot of attention here on that. You know, the grants and the community projects, we're looking to submit those probably next month. So that that's our immediate priority.
I mean.
Anna.
We have PFAS, of course, on on ATAP. So what what can you do to help us with that?
Yes, we've done some engagement on that issue at the end of twenty twenty-one towards the mid mid slash end of twenty twenty-one. The City of Tustin has requested to take the lead on those interactions with the congressional delegation, as well as the various agencies. And so our understanding is that the district is respecting that request. So we continue to monitor the issue and provide those updates. But in terms of direct action, the the City of Tustin is taking the lead on that, is our understanding.
Just one other thing. So I heard Jen Psaki talking this morning. The administration is gonna issue some new the new mask guidelines. Has that happened yet? She said it was imminent. Or is that do you know what they're going to recommend? Do you have any idea?
They at least in the in most of the education spaces, they have said that if you're vaccinated in a low transmission area, you can lift your your mask, your mask policies. But they are leaving it leaving some concessions up to the state and local policies as well.
Are there any other comments? Okay, thank you. You guys can three hours later. There you can go to bed now. Okay? Thank you so much.
We want to hear what's happening at the state. But yes, thank you. We we appreciate going to bed soon. I took a nap.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Now, now we have Dale and let me see if I.
Shimasaki.
Let's see what we have here.
Can you let David Nevin in?
Dale Shimasaki and David Nevin, are they here?
David's in.
This is our state advocacy update from the state, our state issues.
Good evening. Dale Shimasaki with Strategic Education Services. Well, thank you for giving us the opportunity to give you the state advocacy update. David will present the first slide, and I'll present the second slide. So David?
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. If we move on to the next slide. So this is just a quick update on capital outlay projects that are happening at the district and that are in the process of being requested to members. So in the the first update is in the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three budget that was released back in January, the governor's administration did include about twenty point three four million dollars for the construction phase of the Saddleback College Science Math Building reconstruction. This is the third and final phase, and it is the state's match to the district's component for that part of the budget. This will go through the budget pipeline, and we'll see more detail on it in May. The three member requests that are being made on behalf of the district include at IVC, the outdoor learning spaces, at Saddleback College, there are two, the Solar Phase Two project, and the Green Auto Tech Pilot Program. So these are the three requests that will be made through the the legislative delegates of SOCCCD to the budget committees. I'll turn it back over to Dale for the the legislative update.
Next slide. So on February eighteen, members of the legislature had until that date to submit legislative proposals for the upcoming session. And we're going through making a first pass at the more significant pieces that impact community colleges. These are a small selection of them that you should be aware of. The first is AB one oh two by Assembly Member Holden, who seek and in that bill, he seeks to lift the sunset date for dual enrollment to make this program permanent, as many colleges throughout the state have found that this has been a successful program in working with high schools. The bill also allows county offices of education to enter into agreements with community colleges for dual enrollment. There had been some confusion in the legislation as to whether community community colleges could sign agreements with county offices, and this clarifies that that issue. The next legislation is AB fourteen ninety-one by Assembly Member McCarty regarding adult education reserves. There are a number of adult education programs in the adult education consortiums and the participants within the consortiums where there were high levels of reserves in for their adult education programs. And Assembly Member McCarty was concerned about this and wants to put a fifteen percent cap on the reserves for adult education programs, both within the consortium and both and also within the local education agencies that are operating adult education programs. This is a controversial bill. A number of adult education organizations and adult education programs throughout the state disagree with the taking of these reserves and forcing programs reserve reduce their reserves to the fifteen percent level. The one complicating factor is that one The one complicating factor is that, one reason these reserves have accumulated is that um, uh, they have received the money just prior to COVID and there hasn't been, there hasn't been an opportunity to operate programs, many of which are um, in-person programs or more effective to be operated as in-person programs. Um, so that it was difficult uh, to offer those kinds of programs and spend down um, spend down the monies for the, for these programs. The third uh, item is AB 1505 by Assembly Member Rodriguez, which re-benches the faculty obligation number. Um, there's a requirement that uh, that asks uh, community college districts to uh, increase their faculty hot, full-time faculty hires to the, to a goal of 75% full-time faculty and 25% part-time faculty. Uh, this would re-bench the faculty obligation number. In doing this and revenging it to the more current data for fall of 2022, it will result in an increased mandate, unfunded mandate to the community college districts. The State Chancellor's Office of the California Community Colleges estimates that would be a $400 million unfunded uh, mandate uh, to uh, implement the FON. And it's increasingly, it would be increasingly difficult to um, increase your number of faculty hires at a time when uh, enrollment statewide are declining uh, by as much as 25%. Uh, the next bill is AB 17446, uh, the Cal Grant Reform Act. As you know, Mr. Medina introduced this bill last year to reform the Cal Grant Program. It was AB 1456, uh, the governor vetoed the measure. Uh, Mr. Medina still thinks it's a high priority uh, in reforming the Cal Grants to make it uh, tailored more to um, uh, the economic circumstances of students and take away artificial barriers like um, your age, uh, that you start college and the number of years that you're out of high school. Those be are um, what he deems to be artificial barriers that were preventing a number of qualified students uh, who could benefit from net financial aid uh, to participate in the program. And therefore, it's also creates a disadvantage for the students to participate in higher education. Um, in the simulations for for uh, changing these uh, types of eligibility criteria, uh, the student aid commission finds that this would result um, in an increase, a large increase in the number of grants going to the community college system uh, should this bill pass. AB 1752 by uh, Mr. Santiago is regarding compensation for part-time employees. It would require a community college districts to uh, to provide part-time uh, employees. The uh, uh, the prorated uh, allocation, the prorated wages for that of full-time employees. So for example, if you have a full-time faculty member that was getting um, $100,000 a year and there was a part-time faculty member uh, working uh, half-time uh, for the same assignment or same kind of work that uh, the district would be required to pay the part-time faculty member um, uh, $50,000 based on the salary of the full-time uh, faculty member. There's, this is the first time this bill has been introduced. Um, and um, the State Chancellor's Office is still working on a process to determine what what the price tag of this bill would be. Um, the final bill I wanted to call your attention to is uh, on the Education Bond Act. There uh, there's an effort going on to try to put a bond, uh, an education bond on the November 22 ballot. There's two competing measures, uh, AB 75 by uh, Mr. Patrick O'Donnell, which is a bond only for K-12 and community colleges. That's $12 billion, of which 3 billion will be uh, to uh, community colleges. And the Glazer Bill uh, is for uh, TK through um, you higher education. Uh, it provides $2 billion to each of the University of California, California State University, and the California's uh, community colleges. The issue with the Glazer Bill is that because it gives $2 billion in equal installments to each of the segments, community colleges on a per-campus basis get treated unfairly. So the University of California, when you divide it by the number of campuses, their $2 billion comes out to $200 billion per campus for capital outlay. And when you take the um, 116 community colleges uh, in California, take that, divide that by 200, uh, you only get about $17 million per per campus. So because of that inequity, um, number of community colleges are opposing that provision in the Glazer Bill in hopes that he will change, that the legislature will change the uh, the allocation in the Bond Act to make it more balanced uh, in support of the community college system. Those are the bills that we have been, uh, we have cultivated at this point, and we are still reviewing the other bills. Hearings will start, uh, starting next month, uh, in probably the middle of March. Um, and then we'll have more information to to share with the district um, once amendments come into the the newly introduced bills. And without, we could take uh, questions.
I just, I I think this is the elephant in the room. Is our um, basic aid okay? Is there any problem that the basic aid might be uh, in any way um, played around with or diminished?
Yeah, so uh, the answer is no. There are no proposals affecting uh, basic aid districts. Uh, there's um, a huge surplus in in the state budget. So we're not in a mode where we're looking for budget cuts. The Legislative Analyst Office has indicated that um, over and above the governor's January budget, they expect the surplus of it may revision time to reach as high as $23 billion. An additional $23 billion of which um, K-14 education will get, will be given 40% of that amount if it materializes. So there's no scenario um, at hand um, in this budget where um, uh, basic aid districts would be negatively impacted.
I just have to say, I was up in Sacramento when um, Jose Medina was was speaking. And um, he mentioned that he didn't like his new uh, district, his new, his new map. Uh, so he was retiring, but he said he's still gonna fight for community colleges. And and you could see he's, he's supporting this Cal Grant Reform Act. And he got this huge applause from the crowd. People just love him there. So that was really nice. So are there any questions now?
Yeah, hi, hi, guys. Um, I would, you you answered one of the questions. I've been gonna ask you about the $45 billion surplus and where, you know, where you think that's gonna be sliced up. You answered part of it, I think 40% you mentioned is gonna go to K through 12 of the surplus. Is that what you said, Dale?
Yeah, 40% will go for.
Right, the prop 98, the prop nine.
K-14.
Yeah. Um, so where else do you think? What about the discretionary surplus funding? Where do you see that going?
I think that's hard to say because I think there's still um, a lot of proposals in the healthcare side to expand Medi-Cal, to brought, provide broader benefits for Medi-Cal. Um, there's discussion going on to use state general funds to provide uh, uh, free uh, transit passes for students, subsidized transit passes for students. There's a bill, it just got introduced at the deadline, AB 1919, by Assembly Member Holden, but it's in spot form. And it it calls for providing uh, bus passes, uh, free, excuse me, fareless bus passes for uh, K-12 and community uh, college students and University of California and CSU students. So there's proposals like that going through. And housing is always a big, has been and will continue to be a big issue that will be potential for um, allocation.
Do you, um, I understand there are over 2,000 bills that were dropped. Um, do you feel like we've, you've covered all of relevant, relevant ones now? And I'm wondering, it would be helpful if we could receive at some point our positioning on the bills we're tracking, whether it's um, support, opposed, or, you know, neutral or tracking, monitoring?
Yes, yes.
We'll get that?
Yeah, we'll, we'll be providing that to you. We just provided uh, last week, uh, I think there's a uh, the legislative update we just issued for all the bills. And when the spot bills get amended, we'll put another update out. And uh, the amendments, once the bills get amended before hearing, we'll have, be able to develop positions on the legislation, share that with you.
You know, I I don't think we get your reports. I think they should come to the all board members, don't you think?
I agree.
What? You get, you get the ones from Dale Shim. I haven't seen them recently. Okay, okay.
I don't remember seeing.
I don't remember seeing him either. I don't remember seeing anything from Dale Shimasaki or David Nevin. I mean, you guys are good guys, but I don't think, I don't think the board members get them.
Okay, well.
That's federal.
We just started getting capital. We just started getting capital because I asked for it last week. No, we just, we just, we just started getting capital last week because I asked for it.
Well, we will uh, we'll certainly work with uh, uh, your government relations staff, Letitia Clark, uh, to make sure that those are, that those are distributed.
Okay, thank you. We don't get this.
Yeah, you, okay, that'd be great, Dale. If we could, I think, as as we move along, um, and I guess it'd be nice to see, you know, if you could add a column, where does the league stand? Or where does the Chancellor's Office stand?
Sure.
Just an extra couple of columns maybe to see. I guess there'd be a case, maybe we we would be at variance with them. I don't know. Or maybe we'd be neutral and they'd be, take a position. I'm not sure.
Yeah, well, and uh, the league is going through their process right now um, on some of these bills to figure out which, which uh, uh, position they'll be taking on some of these bills as well. So uh, once we get their their report and their decisions, we'll share that with you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Well, thank you. So so moving forward, this is good. Any, any other questions? Okay, trustee Inman.
Yes, that, a part where they divided equally between UC State Colleges and the community colleges has always been so interesting to listen to someone talk about that because of course, it's extremely unequal, given the number of campuses. And you already referred to that. My question is, does that tend to go through? Um, does anybody actually, I mean, does anyone see how illogical that is to even use the word equal in that sense?
Yes, uh, the bill, uh, SB 22 is now in the assembly and we're putting on uh, an effort with a, a number of the community college advocates to get that um, get that issue um, addressed. And we're be, we're planning to meet with the members of the Assembly Education Committee and the Assembly Higher Education Committee um, uh, each to, to get that message across. And I didn't put it on this PowerPoint, but we have a table which outlines the $2 billion. And we divide it up by campus. We show the number of campuses, then we divide the numbers up so we can show them the the gross disparity in it so we can get the message across. And we've, we found so far that the table's been very effective, just on its face. Um, and keep in mind that every legislator in the state has a community college. It's not so with the UC campus or a CSU campus. So um, everyone has um, has a concern when they see that disparity.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, that's right. And don't forget, the community college students go to the community college within 10 miles of their home usually. And the UC students come from all over the world and CSU as well, not quite as much, but as well. So, so our, our students are local students. So this, the legislature should care about that. And they do, so it's good. Okay, thank you. Are there any other questions? Okay, so moving forward, um, the, the next item is um. Yeah, going back up to the number six, which is resolutions. First, 6.1, which is a resolution uh, authorizing remote teleconferencing pursuant to AB 361.
So moved.
Did you make a motion?
Yeah, I make a motion.
Okay, okay. Trustee J makes a motion, is there a second?
Yeah.
Is it, was there a second?
Second.
Oh, thank you, trustee Wright, didn't hear it, sorry. Excellent. Okay, so Madam Secretary, can you call the roll so we can be having meetings through the end of March? Uh, hybrid meetings.
Trustee Inman?
Aye.
Trustee J?
Aye.
Trustee Jamal?
Aye.
Trustee Milchuck?
Aye.
Trustee Prandergast?
Aye.
Trustee Rydel?
Trustee Rydel, can you hear that?
Trustee Rydel?
Yeah. Um, aye, did you say aye?
Can you hear me? Yes.
Okay, excellent, okay.
Trustee Wright?
Yes.
Student trustee Mateen?
Aye.
Okay, um, moving forward is, um, this is a resolution on Career and Technical Education Month. And um, uh, we have more than 200 degrees and certificates to help students get jobs in a, in a high-demand industry sector. So um, is somebody gonna read it or should we just?
I can read the resolve. Uh, therefore be it resolved that the South Orange County Community College District in partnership with the Association for Career and Technical Education do hereby proclaim February as Career Technical Education Month in the South Orange County Community College District. And be it further resolved that all faculty and staff are encouraged to support various activities to promote the benefits of CTE for district students and to encourage the community to support students participating in the fields of CTE.
Great, thank you.
So moved.
Okay, trustee Jamal made a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Second by trustee Inman, I think it was? No? Trustee, trustee J makes second, okay. It's hard with a mask, actually. So Madam Secretary, can you call the roll, please?
Trustee Inman?
Aye.
Trustee J?
Aye.
Trustee Jamal?
Aye.
Trustee Milchuck?
Aye.
Trustee Prandergast?
Aye.
Trustee Rydel?
Aye.
Trustee Wright?
Aye.
Student trustee Mateen?
Aye.
And then the next one is 6.3, and this is further along with uh, to send the trustee board of governors' maps um, to the, to the local area. So is there a motion, a second?
So moved.
So trustee Prandergast makes a motion and trustee?
Wright, second.
Trustee Wright makes a second, okay. Um, Madam Secretary, can you call the roll? This will, this will ensure that the maps will be sent forward.
Hold on.
Yes?
This isn't the maps. This is changing from an at-large election.
Yeah, you're right.
To by area.
Yeah, it's changing from.
The areas that we just approved.
Yeah, yeah.
Will now be single-area elections.
Yeah, absolutely.
I just want to point out that this has been, trustee Jamal and I've had, had very healthy debate about this for many years. And there are a lot of pros and there are a lot of cons. To be honest, I I've agreed with them. There are actually more cons than pros. However, as of late, the two biggest pros that weren't in our discussion but are now relevant is we saved $100,000 and we got to decide what the maps were instead of having them dictated to us.
Yeah.
So regardless of of all the other arguments, it, it, this is, this is a good thing.
And 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 don't forget that um, we were sued early on to make us comply with the California um, Election Act.
No, they tried to sue us.
No, 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 I'm saying.
We get, we got out in front of it.
Yeah, they tried to sue us and we said, make sure that the woman that's suing us lives in the district.
Well, but that's irrelevant because we passed our resolution before we received the letter.
Right, yeah, so we did.
So the letter came after we had already decided to do this. And and yes, you're right, we did ask them to check, but we didn't need to because we had already passed our resolution.
Yeah, yeah, so.
So that's why we did not get sued. They tried to, but it got withdrawn.
Yeah, we didn't have to pay any money. So that was, we didn't pay a penny, so that was good. So this is saving the district lots of money and the money will go to the students. This is what's what we want, okay? So that's, that's for sure. Okay, Madam Secretary, can you call the roll?
Trustee Inman?
Aye.
Trustee J?
Aye.
Trustee Jamal?
Aye.
Trustee Milchuck?
Aye.
Trustee Prandergast?
Aye.
Trustee Rydel?
Aye.
Trustee Wright?
Aye.
Student trustee Mateen?
Aye.
Okay, the next one, 7.1 minutes. Do I have a motion and a second?
So moved.
Okay, trustee J made a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Second, trustee Wright made a second, is that right?
Trustee Rydel?
Oh, trustee Rydel, a second, okay. And this is for the minutes for the last board meeting. So um, Madam Secretary, can you call the roll?
Trustee Inman?
Aye.
Trustee J?
Aye.
Trustee Jamal?
Aye.
Trustee Milchuck?
Aye.
Trustee Prandergast?
Aye.
Trustee Rydel?
Aye.
Trustee Wright?
Aye.
Student trustee Mateen?
Aye.
Okay, the next one is the special meeting minutes. And I'm gonna suggest at some point that we put the minutes in our consent calendar, but not now. So do we have a motion and a second for the special meeting notice?
I shall move.
Okay, that.
A second.
Okay, so there's a motion and a second. So can you, um, Madam Secretary, can you call the roll?
Trustee Inman?
Aye.
Trustee J?
Aye.
Trustee Jamal?
Aye.
Trustee Milchuck?
Aye.
Trustee Prandergast?
Aye.
Trustee Rydel?
Aye.
Trustee Wright?
Aye.
Student trustee Mateen?
Aye.
Okay, and then the next one is the trustee board goals, which I'm sure all of you read. And this is the goals that we, we arrived at our special meeting. So is there a motion and a second?
So moved.
Okay, trustee Wright makes a motion, and trustee, um, J seconds it. Are there any comments or? Okay, Madam Secretary, can you call the roll?
Trustee Inman.
Aye.
Trustee J.
Aye.
Trustee Jamal.
Aye.
Trustee Milchucker.
Aye.
Trustee Prandergast.
Aye.
Trustee Rydel.
Aye.
Trustee Wright.
Aye.
Student trustee Mateen.
Aye.
Okay, and the, the next one's a trustee request for attending conference, and they put a new conference in it, which is the American Association of Community College Conference, annual conference, which will be in D C, uh, New York City, but it's conflicting with the, uh, with our own trustee conference, which is right down the street in Dana Point. So, okay, so, uh, is there a motion and a second?
So moved.
Trustee J makes the motion. Is there a second?
Second. What's the conference, um, what's?
In Dana Point.
The C C L C?
The C C L C Annual Trustee Conference.
It's the annual trustee conference, and at that conference, they, they will announce who wins at the, um, C C C T, um, board.
So I think we should all plan on going.
Yes, we all plan to go. It's right down the street. You could drive down there, and you don't have to stay there. Yeah, yeah.
We're lucky.
It's in Dana Point, right in the neighborhood. I think we should all go too. You're right. I think it's a good idea.
Great, she, do we, are you gonna let us know? It went out already?
It's out.
Okay.
Okay.
You know if you want to go.
Okay.
Okay, thanks. And it's right, right in the neighborhood, so it won't be too expensive to attend. You have to just drive there, I think. So, Madam Secretary, can you call the roll?
Sorry, who seconded?
Who seconded?
Trustee Jamal.
Trustee Jamal seconded, okay.
Trustee Inman.
Aye.
Trustee J.
Aye.
Trustee Jamal.
Aye.
Trustee Milchucker.
Aye.
Trustee Prandergast.
Aye.
Trustee Rydel.
Aye.
Trustee Wright.
Aye.
Student trustee Mateen.
Aye.
And then the next one is, um, that passed. This is the Orange County School Board Association Marine DeMarco Award nomination, and, and the, the Marine DeMarco Award could go to anybody.
Board of Governors' Classified Employee of the Year.
Oh, I'm sorry, I skipped a very important one, the Classified Employ, Employee of the Year, and, um, this is, um, um, I think my paper's jumping around here. Um, it's, it's, uh, um, it's really fascinating that, um.
Can we say something about it?
Yeah, would you like to say something?
No, I, I said, can, I mean, I would, I would, I'm, I'm happy to, but.
Yeah, it's Randy, Randy Van Dyke. I couldn't find the, my, my notes, and he's, and I, and I read the information about him, and it was just incredible. He brought all these very important people and, and, um, made this a destination for students to attend film classes and work through the foundation, so it was very impressive. So, I, is there a motion and a second?
So moved.
Trustee J.
Second.
Uh, trustee, um, Wright seconded it, so.
Very supportive. Yeah, this is great.
Yeah, it was very, very impressive, very, very impressive. So, Madam Secretary, can you call the roll?
Trustee Inman.
Aye.
Trustee J.
Aye.
Trustee Jamal.
Aye.
Trustee Milchucker.
Aye.
Trustee Prandergast.
Aye.
Trustee Rydel.
Aye.
Trustee Wright.
Aye.
Student trustee Mateen.
Aye.
Okay, the next one is the Marine DeMarco Award, Orange County School Board Association. Um, is, is, does anybody? This could be, you could nominate a school board member, a college board member, or anybody in, in this one. It's not the Marion Burgerson Award, and there has to be a, a school board member. So, does anybody want to nominate anybody, or?
Didn't you win it three years ago?
I won, I won the Marion Burgerson Award. I, I did.
I was at the.
Yeah, you came. That was, that was wonderful. Thank you for coming.
You're welcome.
Actually, the whole board came. That was really wonderful. So, 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 um, but this is, this could be, anybody could win it. You could win it for, um, does, you want to nominate anybody or not? Does anybody want to do it? Want to run? No? I guess if nobody wants to nominate anybody, could, could we, we could nominate someone later on, right? At, at this, it has, it has to be right now.
No, deadline.
You need the deadline.
We need the deadline, okay.
Deadline's tomorrow, isn't it?
Our deadline's tomorrow.
Deadline's tomorrow. Okay, we do need to know.
I don't think I have much of a chance to win it, so.
Well, it's helpful if you're, um, active in the Orange County School Board Association, because they're the ones that vote on, on, on the winner, so, so, so. I, did you want to be nominated?
I wouldn't say no, but I don't know if I deserve it.
Will I nominate, um, trustee Prandergast, because he's, he's a representative to the O C S B A, the Community College Representative. Is, is there a second?
I second it.
Okay, Bobby J seconded it, okay. And then. Okay, so, um, Madam Secretary, do you want to call the roll to nominate trustee Prandergast for the, for the, um, Marine DeMarco Award?
Before we vote, a question.
Yes.
How is this gonna get written up by, did you say tomorrow? Is that the deadline?
I don't remember that. I read.
Nomination by tomorrow, and then the nominee has to fill out paperwork.
Okay, great.
Okay, okay.
You have one day. They, I already asked. Um, they're giving us until March 2nd to turn in the nomination.
Do they have one day?
Does the write-up have to come with the nomination? Oh, yeah.
Something to do.
And I don't think there is any way that you, like, I went up.
Work on that during the summer.
Like, I went up and pressed the flesh of all those people up in Sacramento. I don't think in one day you'll have an opportunity to do that, you know? Okay, so, Madam Secretary, can you call the, call the roll?
Trustee Inman.
Aye.
Trustee J.
Aye.
Trustee Jamal.
Aye.
Trustee Milchucker.
Aye.
Trustee Prandergast.
Aye.
Trustee Rydel.
Aye.
Trustee Wright.
Aye.
Student trustee Mateen.
Aye.
Oh, I should have abstained. Sorry.
No, it's okay. Marion Burgerson said she always voted for herself, because one time she didn't vote for herself and she lost, and she was always very upset, so. So, after that, she said she always voted for herself. She's, she's a lovely lady, actually. Okay, so, so, um, the, the next one is the board policy revision, um, and, and this is, we already.
Yeah, these are for approval.
It's just for approval, okay. And prerequisite, prerequisites, and advisories, and they're, I wrote, I'm sure we all read them all. They're simple things, so. Um, do we have a motion and a second?
So moved.
Trustee J makes the motion. Is there a second?
And Jim Wright.
Trustee Wright.
And Jim Wright seconded it, okay. Are there any comments? Okay, um, Madam Secretary, can you call the roll?
Trustee Inman.
Aye.
Trustee J.
Aye.
Trustee Jamal.
Aye.
Trustee Milchucker.
Aye.
Trustee Prandergast.
Aye.
Trustee Rydel.
Aye.
Trustee Wright.
Aye.
Student trustee Mateen.
Aye.
And, um, this is jumping around. Okay, the next one is, this is for revision and study, and it's the employee travel program. So, is there a motion for review and study?
So moved.
Trustee J?
Second.
Second.
Could trustee Prandergast second? So, Madam Secretary, can you call the, uh, roll? This is for review and study?
Aye.
Trustee J.
Aye.
Trustee Jamal.
Aye.
Trustee Milchucker.
Aye.
Trustee Prandergast.
Aye.
Trustee Rydel.
Aye.
Trustee Wright.
Aye.
Student trustee Mateen.
Aye.
Okay, we already did ledge policies, um, and the next one is, um, the Foundation's annual report. So, I think we have the two Foundation, um, people here to talk to us about the Foundation's annual report.
Give me a second. I'm promoting everyone now.
Thank you. Next time I'll print it out for some reason. It's just.
Are you ready for me to begin? Are you, um, are the Saddleback people gonna come in, going to come in at the same time?
Are you, are you putting, are you doing it together, or are you doing it one at a time?
One at a time.
So I think, I think you can start, because Saddleback's not in yet, if you'd like to.
Okay, absolutely. I'm happy to do that.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening. My name is Alyssa Oransky, and I am the Executive Director of the Irvine Valley College Foundation. I'm very happy to be here tonight with my counterpart, Liz McCann, and the leaders of our respective boards, Mike Drennan and Mark Schwartz, to update you on our Foundation's accomplishments. For those of you who have attended in the past, we made some changes to our presentation this year. Instead of numbers, we're going to focus most of our time on our accomplishments and the impact that we made on our communities. For I V C, you are going to see some slides with two years of updates. This is part of our shift so that in the future, our remarks on the ti, will be focused on the time period between presentations as opposed to the fiscal year. Next slide. And one more, please. So, this slide, as you can see, is the financial position of the I V C Foundation. All of the information on this slide is coming out of our audit, and many of the numbers show up on future slides, so I'm not going to walk through this this evening. Next slide. Our net assets. This is one of the slides that gets, you can see already from my face. It's, it's exciting news for us. So, for years, we've had double-digit growth in our net assets, but this year, we actually set a record, and we saw a 27% growth in our net assets. Next slide, please. So I'm going from one of my favorite slides to the next favorite slide. Anyone who knows me knows that I love endowments. And the I V C Foundation is engaged in a number of impactful projects, but the growth of our endowment is the one I get the most excited about. For, let's focus on the blue line, as it is the one that represents the investments that we oversee. Clearly, the numbers show we had tremendous growth over the years, and this year was no exception. The reason that I take great cock pride in these numbers and we focus on the endowment is because it provides an ongoing, reliable income stream that will impact the students and programs of I V C in perpetuity. Next slide, please. So our scholarships are an integral part of what we do. We support our students directly this way. And last year, we awarded a record amount of scholarships. If I can, I would like to draw your attention to the orange bars, as those are the scholarships we manage internally. And while the difference, the overall difference between the 18, 19, and 20, 21 years, which is our two highest years, is only $15,000, the amount we awarded through the foundations that was money we raised and awarded was more than $74,000 higher. Next slide, please. This slide is a new one for us. So, we, sorry, this slide is a new one for us. The I V C Foundation raises money, but as you can see from this document, we give back to the district in a variety of ways, and this really lays out the tangible ways we give back. There are a number of intangible ways as well. And as you can see, one of the items is our in-kind service of our board members, which is being demonstrated tonight by the president of our board, Mike Drennan. So, while my office team is amazing, and I actually say that I have the best team on campus, none of this will be possible without the incredible work and support of the I V C Foundation Board of Governors. So now I'm going to turn it over to Mike Drennan, the president, who's going to have a little more fun and give, tell you some more exciting things about the Foundation and the impacts that we're having. Next slide.
Thank you, Alyssa. Before I begin, I would like to give a shout out to Lisa Greenberg, who was my predecessor, and all the work she did on Title V in the past year. It was amazing what she accomplished, uh, with her time in creating, uh, some, a great legacy. I also like to thank Alyssa and her team for keeping the Foundation's pro, programs up and running, and people engaged during the past two years of pandemic and the creation of virtual environments. The next slide. So, one of the major accomplishments was the renaming of the main stage at the Performing Arts Center as the Resnor Stage. This is a result of a bequest, and it was, and it will establish an endowment going forward. Next slide. So, a lot of work and creativity, we had to pull off our fundraiser last year as a virtual event. This was a major undertaking, and we need to make sure it remained as personal as possible, considering the environment. The event started with a drive-through. Attendees were greeted with a party in the box. Then they were able to say hello to a few people as they drove through. Some were able to review some of the auction items and pick up a pre-ordered gourmet meal, uh, before the event was moved over to the Resnor Stage for a live-stream fundraiser hosted by Alyssa. Overall, we were able to raise over $100,000. This amazing accomplishment was not possible without the support of many people, including our marketing department, creative services, facilities, the Performing Arts Center, information technology, the president's office, and health and services. Thank all of you for your support. Next slide. In the middle of the pandemic, the I V C Foundation team decided to start a new event, Giving Day. We hold ours the third Thursday in October to coincide with the anniversary of I V C's founding day. As you can see in the numbers, we raised $39,000 in our first event, and $41,000 in our second. The first year's number is a bit skewed by a $23,000 gift in stock. But it's important to recognize that the increased participation year-over-year from 89 gifts to 134. We're planning our next Giving, uh, Day on October 20th, 2022. And one reason the Giving Day is so, uh, popular, there's a special match that we grant from the Foundation on these gifts. Next slide. One of our new initiatives that we launched this past year was a planned giving program. We're now up and running with this, and as you can see, some of the postcards that we sent out, uh, to get people involved. Alyssa asked me to put in a plug here. If you have included I V C in your estate plans, please let us know, and we'd love to feature you in an upcoming newsletter. The marketing of the planned giving is leading to other gifts, including bequests, donations for mandatory I R A distributions, and being named the beneficiary in life insurance policies. Next slide. So, we mentioned early that the endowments is the top priority. Although the investment market is very volatile right now, we did surpass the 2 million mark in our endowment account that we control. We secured five new endowments in the 2021 year, and eight new ones since July 1st of 21. In addition, you know, last year, we saw a record number of scholarships, applications. A total of 1,280 were submitted, which is an increase of over 400 over the past year, and double what we saw in 2019. The Foundation was able to award over half a million dollars last year, which is a record amount. The scholarship ceremony was always one of the highlights of the year, and of course, we had to get creative and pivot to a virtual ceremony last year. More than 300 people attended our online scholarship ceremony. Please mark your calendar for May 20th of this year for this year's event, which will be held live, hopefully, in the Live Oak Terrace. Another, since March of 2020, the emergency fund has become a major part of the Foundation. We have awarded over $133,000 to students who are facing emergency situations. The pandemic prompted this, but we're still helping students now who are faced with one-time emergencies. These funds are often the difference between a student remaining in school or dropping out. And as Alyssa noted, our net assets has also grown over 27% in the last year. Next slide. Wanted to point out some of the new initiatives, and we've talked about a little of them before, and we talked about Giving Day and Planned Giving. In addition, the Foundation Board has started two new subcommittees this year, a marketing subcommittee and an investment subcommittee. These are in conjunction with the other committee's support of board development and finance that we have in place. We're reaching out to our retirees also to engage them in college activities. All these are part of a strategic, a strategic plan that we are formulating with the support of Dr. Hernandez. Next slide. This is a picture of our Board of Directors. All of the accomplishments would not have been possible at the hard work of Alyssa and her team, along with these board members. They give of their time, their talent, and their treasure to the Foundation. I've asked each of them to stretch a little extra this year and form some of these new subcommittees, and it's run completely by the volunteers. I would like to thank the Board of Trustees, the District, the College Leadership, and all our supporters. Without you, none of this could be possible. But thank you, and I'd like now to turn this over to our counterparts at Saddle, Saddleback, Liz McLean and Mark Schwartz. Next slide.
Thank you, Mike. Hi, everybody. Good evening. I'm Elizabeth McCann, Executive Director of the Saddleback College Foundation. I'm very happy to be here tonight. Um, I'm actually zooming in from San Diego, where I'm attending the Council for the Advancement and Support of Education Conference and with many of my peers, um, from the California Community College Foundations. And Alyssa, we miss you. Um, I'm also joined this evening by our wonderful co-chair of our Board of Directors, Mark Schwartz. And we're gonna go back and forth, um, on our presentation, and we're gonna share this. So, next slide, please. So, very similar to I V C, um, this statement of our financial position comes directly from our audit. And you'll notice we had a two-point, almost 2.2 million-dollar change in assets, um, this past, this full year. So, next slide, please. So next slide, please.
Hello, I'm Mark Schwartz. And with family originating from the city of Kyiv, I too stand in solidarity with the country of Ukraine and their president. Anyway, it's a pleasure to be able to speak in front of the board today. In terms of the foundation assets, we likewise with IVC reflect a 21% increase in net assets from fiscal year 1920 to 2021, which also has shown a 31% increase over the last five years. We're proud of that. Next slide.
All right, thank you. So this slide reflects our Saddleback Endowment and, you know, very similar to IVC. The yellow line represents the endowments that are managed by our financial advisors with Greystone. And the orange line represents the OSHA scholarships, which we do not manage. They are managed in terms of their financial manage. They are housed at the Foundation for California Community Colleges. But I do want to point out that these are funds that Saddleback College Foundation and IVC Foundation raised. It was a part of initiative, as you probably all remember, with the OSHA Foundation, in which OSHA matched any new gifts that were coming into the college. So the foundations did raise those funds. We just don't oversee their day-to-day management. And this year, because things have been doing well, we just found out that we're getting a bump in our disbursement for our students next year. So that's exciting. And next slide, please.
Next slide. This chart shows our scholarships that we've awarded. And the chart shows scholarships over the past five years. There's been about an average of 439,000. So we're about at that number this past year. The numbers are affected by endowment payouts and payouts are based on 12, you know, quarter averages. So our investment might be down just a little, as some of you may recall. But while we took maybe a slight dip in this fiscal year of 2021, the next chart will tell a whole different story. Next slide.
Thank you. So I've had the absolute pleasure of serving as the director for Saddleback College's Higher Education Emergency Relief Funds on the student emergency aid side since April 2020. And just have to thank my wonderful team for all their support and of course, our colleagues at IVC too, who've also joined us in this effort. So you'll see here that while our scholarship awards were down a bit this past year and we're showing both 1920 and 2021, which is when HIRF kicked in, we have really provided historical aid for students in addition to foundation scholarships. In fact, our, we call it our CARES Committee because the CARES Act was the first of the COVID response. And we like CARES, it sounds better than some of the others. So we, what we did as part of that initiative was we took all of the students who applied for foundation scholarships in both of these years and were not selected to receive scholarships. We awarded them Higher Education Emergency Relief Funds if they were eligible. So we did ensure that while, you know, the foundation was going to be dispersing, you know, a little bit less in that one year, we did ensure that our students were getting more aid than ever. I just have to say, because I talk to many of our students on a daily basis, while we have this historic level of need, their need far exceeds the capacity of even these HIRF awards and certainly the foundation's emergency grants, which have, you know, been nearly exhausted in this pandemic. So I just want to, I know that both Mike and Alyssa pointed out the importance of scholarships and the importance of our emergency funds. And truly, they are so, so meaningful and helpful to our students right now. So next slide.
Good. This slide shows the benefits to the district and of course, the college. It shows a direct support from Saddleback College's foundation that benefits both, obviously, the district and the college. And the investments that the college are getting, what we feel is a really great and excellent ROI on their investments in the foundation. And in particular, if you go to the next slide, we are very proud and excited.
Let's skip the slide.
Yeah.
Or two, actually.
Nope.
One before that. Oh.
At or, go back to the picture.
I'm not sure what happened.
There he goes. Stay there. Anyway, this is something we are extremely proud of and excited about. Of course, it's a, it's a huge milestone that we celebrated in fall of 2021 with our brand-new stadium that I'm sure all of you have seen and feel the same way. It's exciting for our future. It's exciting for everything that we're doing. We did hold a grand opening celebration with a lovely ribbon-cutting ceremony that Marcia was at and that was happening in October. And we celebrated the first naming gift to the stadium, which was called the Ferry Foundation Room, which many of you have seen. And we're happy to report that a new naming partner will be named shortly as well. Next slide. Yeah, it's good to hear, right?
Yeah. Yes, it's very exciting. Thank you. One of the other exciting pieces of our stadium is our relationship with Collegiate Sports Management Group, this partnership that we formed. And I want to point out, this is really trailblazing for community colleges. You know, the big four-year universities are, you know, naming facilities is just a regular part of their everyday business. And this is really new territory for our community colleges. It's very exciting. But there's also not a lot of, you know, history here to go by. So we did partner with Collegiate Sports Management Group. They are known experts in their field. And part of this relationship is really a three-tiered engagement, where they are completing evaluation of our stadium. So what the total of all of those assets that we have in the stadium is worth in the marketplace. They're also putting together marketing collateral for us and that is in progress. And then the third piece that we're working on is securing corporate sponsorships. So CSMG is actually based in New York. However, they have hired a local representative for us who knows the LA and Orange County markets well. I've already met with him and we've been brainstorming and we're working on some leads. But another thing that's so exciting about this is that CSMG, while they're called Collegiate Sports Management Group, they've also done a naming, a number of projects around fine arts complexes and a variety of different facilities, you know, beyond, above and beyond athletics facilities. So really this, if we're pleased with how this goes, this is a relationship that we could certainly replicate across campus for other areas and not just athletics. So we're excited about that.
Yeah, as a point of reference, I work in the business of sports and I know the folks that run this organization. And this is typical of what many colleges do is use a outsourced company to help, help with those types of valuations and sponsorship. So it, believe it to be an opportunity that will become very profitable for us. Next slide. So as we talk about our successes and our accomplishments, the biggest one was our gala. First of all, we got to do it live this year, which was probably the most exciting thing that, you know, we could come out of over the last couple of years. On November 13th, we did host what we believe and what we know to be the most successful gala in our history. Our 2017 gala was the one to beat and we surpassed that significantly in some areas. Most successful was the paddle race that we, we ever had, the biggest one ever, a 74% increase from 2019. We had fewer attendees because of the pandemic than past years, but understandably, of course, but raised significantly more money than most recent galas. We obviously had the right people in attendance. New underwriting opportunities that doubled our donations totaled from 2019 showcased the talent of our Fine Arts and Media Technology Programs and faculty, staff, and students and alumni at this event. And then we also had, just, I guess we want to recognize and offer big thanks to our Saddleback College and Irvine Valley College volunteers that we really couldn't do this great event without you. And so look forward to our upcoming event this year will be, well, actually, our 2022 gala is scheduled for November the 5th. And our 2023 gala, we've had to kind of organize a little further out just to kind of get dates because they're hard to get, will be October the 6th of 2023. Next slide.
I just also want to reiterate Mark's thanks to our wonderful, wonderful colleagues across campus who made the gala the success that it was. And I have to give extra big thanks to IVC, particularly to my wonderful counterpart Alyssa, who very selflessly, knowing that, you know, we were at Saddleback, we were under, in a staffing situation where we needed support and she just selflessly lended Karen Jimenez to us. So thank you, Alyssa. She knows I appreciate her, but I want to publicly recognize that. So also, I want to highlight something really fun and innovative that we did with our Horticulture and Landscape Design Department. So many of you know that our Horticulture Team hosts plant sales every semester in their beautiful facility. And it's always highly anticipated. And the funds that they raise at these plant sales support scholarships for students. So they were really, you know, hurting for the students when they weren't able to host their plant sale in spring of 2020. So the Horticulture Team, you know, came together with the foundation and we put together this idea to host the virtual plant sale. And it was really the Horticulture, the wonderful Horticulture Faculty's idea. They came to, to me and to Dana Taylor on my team and asked if we thought this was possible. So Dana, who already had, you know, to shift from a in-person gala to a virtual gala, said, sure, we can do this. And at the same time, so we had a very successful virtual plant sale in fall of 2020. It was so successful that since we ended up being home again in spring of 2021, we hosted another virtual plant sale. And then again, we had a virtual plant sale in fall of 2021. And this was truly a collaborative effort across campus. We needed, you know, the campus police involved, the health center. We had to make sure that this was going to be safe for people. And I know that our trustees, some of our trustees were plant purchasers. So thank you, and also our chancellor. And we've raised over $13,000 for student scholarships with those three virtual plant sales. And we will be hosting our fourth and hopefully, our final virtual plant sale, March 31st through April 3rd. So mark your calendars. And next slide, please.
So Liz, I'm going to interrupt you for a second. We have to offer a motion. We have to offer, I offer a motion to extend the meeting to 9:30 PM.
I second it.
We have to do this, otherwise the meeting's going to end at 9 o'clock. So Madam Secretary, can you call the rule in there?
Trustee Inman.
Aye.
Trustee Jay.
Aye.
Trustee Jamal.
Aye.
Trustee Melchiker.
Aye.
Trustee Prendergast.
Aye.
Trustee Rydel.
Aye.
Trustee Wright is having technical issues and...
He's having technical issues.
And student trustee Mateen.
Aye.
Okay.
Back to you, Liz.
Well, thank you for the time tonight. I know it's been a long evening for everybody. So we've just got one last slide here. We really feel great about all of our accomplishments at Saddleback College for the last couple of years and for the future. Of course, the stadium is extremely exciting. But from an investment's point of view, we are now at $10,364,000 we have invested, which is the first time that we've actually gotten into the eight-figure number. So we're pretty excited to be over that $10 million mark. And our net assets are now at $12 million. Well, we're almost, almost at $13 million, which is pretty exciting. The team secured new scholarships in 2021. There were, there were eight of those. This current year, just over halfway through, we've already secured 10 new scholarships and we continue to increase this number. Grants granted 160,000 in emergency funds as well to students this year. And we awarded over $11 million in HIRF emergency grants to students. So feeling pretty good about all that stuff. And I'll pass it over to Liz. Next slide.
Thank you. Thank you, Mark. So again, just wanted to highlight some of the exciting initiatives that we're planning on working on, you know, that we are working on this fiscal year and moving forward. These are long-term initiatives. So first, we are planning to relaunch our giving circles. We have three, President Circle, Fine Arts, and Emeritus. We are also looking at launching a formal employee giving program. So more on that later. And then we have also, like IVC, have had an emphasis on planned giving. Planned giving or legacy giving has been a real, an area of success for Saddleback, but there's so much more that we can do. So a couple of the things that we're doing there, I'm actually participating in a certified specialist for planned giving program that's run out of Cal State Long Beach. And I, I describe it as a mini master's degree in planned giving. It's a year-long program followed by completion of a practicum. And I am halfway through. And it'll be a little bit further along next month on it. And it's been going wonderfully. I'm learning so much. We've also engaged with Crescendo, like IVC Foundation. It provides us with really, you know, a background framework for managing our planned giving with software, with websites, and then also with marketing. And then we are working with some local planned giving experts and advisors to really build our network there. So these are all very exciting things. And we're just so grateful to all of you for the support that you provide to our foundations, your wonderful partners, and we truly appreciate you. And I also just want to thank Mark and our entire foundation board of directors as well for all their support.
Yes, thank you, and go Bobcats.
Thank you very much. It was very informative and we love our two foundations. They do fabulous work and we love our two foundations.
Foundation directors and our volunteers, Mike and Mark, you're doing fabulous jobs. So thank you for all your help. Are there any questions or comments from board members?
Yeah, I do.
Okay, trustee Jamal has a question.
Yep, first, thanks Alyssa and Mike and Liz and Mark. I'm a huge supporter of the foundations and thank you for all the work that you do. And thank you for your presentation today. And thanks to the board of governors for your volunteerism. It's really greatly appreciated. We don't say it enough, but we really do appreciate what you are doing, your leadership there. I just had a few mattering of questions. Liz, on, when do you think that the board will be apprised of the naming rights activities? Our board, the board of trustees? Because you mentioned some exciting news.
Yes, so we bring our naming, you know, whenever we have a naming gift that's ready to announce or a sponsorship, we will bring those to the board of trustees for approval. And we do have one that we're finalizing and there will be more to come.
Sounds exciting.
Okay, that's good news. Very good news. And are they all mostly around the stadium, the naming rights? Or is it all at the stadium?
Oh yes, entirely the stadium.
Okay.
So we're working on, you know, obviously, larger corporate sponsorships with CSMG. We have the Ferry Families gift and we're also working on some, we have another private gift from a family that is in the works at this moment. gift from a family that is in the works at this moment.
Okay, great. And I agree, I was at the Gala in November. I'm curious, it's fantastic to hear you shattered grocery receipts. I'm wondering, the Ritz is not an inexpensive place to put on an event, so in terms of our net income, was that also record-shattering?
Yes, our net income was absolutely record-shattering. It was higher than ever. I think we make some assumptions about the Ritz in terms of how expensive it is, and that is true. But I think we also need to thank them for their partnership and the fact that they reduce their minimum charge by 50%. And they are the only resort of that caliber in this area that does that. When I reached out, because we were having challenges with finding a date that would work because of the impact of COVID and all of the events that have been postponed into 2022, 2023, it was nearly impossible to get dates. So, I reached out to other high-end resorts in the area, and they were all twice the amount of the Ritz Carlton, and they would make zero concessions to a nonprofit. So, we're very lucky. They treat us wonderfully. You know, we get the Ritz experience without the ticket price.
Great, so I assume that means we're going to be going back.
We will be at the Ritz for the next two years, yes.
So, I just have a last question. I know the IVC financials on this... Hello? Under Support and Revenues, it does delineate District Support, which is substantial. Is that not the case with Saddleback? Is there, I noticed there wasn't a commensurate line item on Support and Revenues under the Saddleback Foundation financials.
There should have been.
Unless I missed it.
Absolutely.
Is it there?
Yeah.
Oh, I missed it.
That was a good question and a good answer.
Where is...
But wasn't that it?
Where is the District Support line item?
It's Donated Services.
Oh, so it's just categorized differently? So, donated services is District Support?
Yes, and this, Trustee Jamal, this comes directly from our financial statements from our auditors.
Yeah, just to be helpful, if we use the same language for both foundations, because I didn't know that donated services was referring to District Support.
Okay, I'm sorry, I pulled this directly from our financials, but we can absolutely use the same language.
Okay.
I thought we did. But yes, Donated Services is District Support.
Okay, great, thank you.
That was a good question about the Ritz Carlton and a great answer. So, they really are working with us. It's really good to know, so we'll support them.
We're so, yeah, we're very lucky.
Yeah, thank you. We'll continue to support them, thank you. I don't think I've ever missed a foundation event, and probably most of the boards are the same way. So, thank you. Are there any other questions? Okay.
I want to thank Alyssa for the wonderful job she does, and Mike, Mike Drennan, you've done a great job. Thank you.
Bobby, we appreciate you representing the chancellor on our Foundation Board. You are always there, you participate, and we appreciate you.
Thank you.
Great, excellent. Yeah, we've got great foundations, thank you. So, Madam Secretary, can you call the roll? We don't need the roll because it's just a report.
No, it's not a report.
Okay, okay, so, thank you so much, and thank you, Mark. I see you now, and thanks, Elizabeth, and Alyssa, and all of you.
Mark's there.
And Mike?
Yep.
Okay, so...
You all.
Have a good evening.
Have a good evening, too. Thank you again. Do you help us for the, do the great work we do for the college, you do for the college? Okay, now, the next item is the Consent Calendar. So, first, we ask if there's any items of, you know, all the items for the Consent Calendar are items that are somewhat routine and that you don't need to talk about, but if you want to talk about one, you could pull it off the consent calendar. So, is there any item that somebody would like to pull off the consent calendar? No? Okay, so then, we need a motion and a second. So, Trustee Inman make the motion, and...
Second.
And Trustee Wright seconds it for the voting on the entire consent calendar. So, Madam Secretary, can you call the roll? Trustee Inman?
Aye.
Trustee Jay?
Aye.
Trustee Jamal?
Aye.
Trustee Melchiker?
Aye.
Trustee Prendergast?
Aye.
Trustee Rydel?
Aye.
Trustee Wright?
Aye.
Student Trustee Mateen?
Aye.
Okay, great. And the next item is...
Business Services 10.1.
That's what I thought, Business Services, so, yeah, so, the first one is 10.1, Adopt Resolution 2203 for the expenditure of AB 1290 redevelopment pass-through funds, so...
So moved.
Did Trustee Jay make the motion? Is there a second?
Trustee Wright just seconded.
Trustee Wright seconded, thank you. And are there any comments or questions? Okay, Madam Secretary, can you call the roll? Trustee Inman?
Aye.
Trustee Jay?
Aye.
Trustee Jamal?
Aye.
Trustee Melchiker?
Aye.
Trustee Prendergast?
Aye.
Trustee Rydel?
Aye.
Trustee Wright?
Aye.
Student Trustee Mateen?
Aye.
Okay, the next one, Student Health Fee Academic Year 2223, and they're increasing for the year, and for the summer, $1, which is pretty good considering inflation. Okay, is there a motion and a second?
So moved.
Trustee Jay makes a motion, and Trustee...
Second.
Rydel seconds it, okay. Madam Secretary, can you call the roll? Trustee Inman?
Aye.
Trustee Jay?
Aye.
Trustee Jamal?
Aye.
Trustee Melchiker?
Aye.
Trustee Prendergast?
Aye.
Trustee Rydel?
Aye.
Trustee Wright?
Aye.
Student Trustee Mateen?
Aye.
Okay, and the next one is the Award of Agreements for the Parking Management Services for IVC and Saddleback College with IPS Group, and I already asked that they're going to put it off until we start charging staff and students for parking? So, is there a motion and a second?
I so move.
So, Trustee Inman makes the motion, and Trustee Jay seconds it? So, Madam Secretary, can you call the roll, please? Trustee Inman?
Aye.
Trustee Jay?
Aye.
Trustee Jamal?
Aye.
Trustee Melchiker?
Aye.
Trustee Prendergast?
Aye.
Trustee Rydel?
Aye.
Trustee Wright?
Aye.
Student Trustee Mateen?
Aye.
And the next one is Non-Resident Student Trustees for Academic Year 2223 for Out-of-State Students, and I guess they're increasing $40 a unit, but we only increase them the same amount as all the local schools. So, we're in the same ballgame as all of them. Is there a motion and a second?
What do you mean, so, well, okay, there are motion and a second.
Yeah, do you want to make a...
I'm moving.
Okay. Trustee Jamal make the motion, is there a second?
Trustee Wright seconded.
Trustee Wright seconded, thank you.
So, when you say it's commensurate with all the schools, you mean the other three community college districts and the colleges? These are identical fees?
Well, close.
Amory?
Did they change?
So, the amount that we're proposing will be identical to the Coast Community College District, but it is more expensive than North Orange County and Rancho Santiago Community College District. They are both proposing to be at $345 total between the two, the non-resident and the capital outlay.
There's two different, there's a tuition fee of $319 and a capital outlay of $42, and those have to be added together for the total amount.
Correct.
Why do we feel this is the right amount? Anyone one of the colleges want to speak about this, or is... It seems like an important decision.
I know it has gone through both of the colleges' president's councils, and that is the joint recommendation that we came. The statewide average for the non-resident fee is at $332. We chose to go with a contiguous district with the $319. So, that's where the non-resident fee comes from. To give you an idea where the other districts are, like I said, Coast is at $319, North Orange County is at $290, and then Rancho Santiago is at $332 for the non-resident fee. So, we're lower on the non-resident than Rancho, higher than North Orange, and then the same at Coast. As far as the capital outlay fee, North Orange is going to be charging $55. Rancho Santiago is going to be charging $13, and then we're at the $42. I think, you know, being at $361 with Coast, I think Coast is our biggest competitor when it comes to the international students and the non-residents, more so than North Orange and Rancho. And that was where we felt that if we were the same price as Coast, that we would still be competitive and would be able to draw the students in that we're trying to draw in.
Yeah, I know that you have to decide, you certainly don't want the students to not come here because the out-of-state tuition is too high, but yet, you want to be able to bring some revenue in for the rest of the college. So, I mean, that's what you need to do.
Well, I hear that, I guess, that they've done their due diligence, and the colleges have gone through their process, and this is the numbers they've landed on, so let's hope that we get it, we got it right. Okay?
In my report, my board report, I was amazed when I heard that at the meeting of the Board of Governors, that they consider Irvine one of the safest cities in America.
It's the FBI.
Yeah, it's listed as one of the safest cities in America.
The safest.
Yeah, so, what you're saying...
Of its size.
For its size. Carolyn was just saying the FBI said it's one of the, is the safest. So, I think that has a lot to do...
Yes, listed in the newspapers about every year as one of the safest cities, so, you're right. And so, what I think what Trustee Jay is saying is that the students from other countries would feel safe coming to a situation where it's considered to be a very safe place for their children to live while they're in college. And I guess if you find it's a little too high this year, then you'll lower it next year, right? Is that what, do you like analyze it after you do it?
Well, we do look, you know, every year, because the calculations are very prescriptive on how we can do the calculation and what we can charge. And so, that's why statewide average is something that a lot of districts charge, which is the 332. We chose to go with the lower amount for the non-resident of one of our contiguous districts, which is Coast at 319. If we went with our calculated amount, that's the $295. On the capital outlay side, our calculated amount is 94, but we're proposing to charge only 42, so that way, we're staying within and equal to what Coast is charging, which we deem as our biggest competitor in this area.
So, people from other countries will see that we're lower than the statewide average, you know?
If they look at it that way.
If they look at it that way, yeah. So...
Okay.
Okay, well, next year, let us know how it worked out, okay?
If you look at the exhibit, it lists all the things that have to consider when, that we have to consider when we calculate the fee.
Yeah, we have to do a one...
And all of the different ways that we can look at it.
It's pretty prescriptive. We have to have a one-time application fee, and then the other fees are charged per unit. I know that it's really good to have international students for a lot of reasons. One of them is because it's a great source of revenue for us, and another is because it's really great to have international students, you know, working with our students, so that our students, you know, learn about what it's like in other countries, and vice versa, so... Okay, so, Madam Secretary, can you call the roll, please? Trustee Inman?
Aye.
Trustee Jay?
Aye.
Trustee Jamal?
Aye.
Trustee Melchiker?
Aye.
Trustee Prendergast?
Aye.
Trustee Rydel?
Aye.
Trustee Wright?
Aye.
Student Trustee Mateen?
Aye.
Okay, and then, the next is Human Resources, which is the academic employees, and is there any, are there any changes?
President Wiscott, there are no changes, however, there is a readout before you tonight is the contract for Dr. Christopher McDonald, so you will be, before you approving a contract for a position for Dr. McDonald as Vice Chancellor of Educational and Technology Services. The contract dates are March 8th, 2022, through June 30, 2025, range 27, Step 7, annual salary $285,540. I join the board in congratulating Dr. McDonald.
Yeah, we're delighted to see Vice Chancellor McDonald join our team up at the District Office as the Vice Chancellor of Education and Technology Services. And the other three people I'd like to mention are, these are people that are retiring. Seth Hackwald is a very longtime computer information system instructor, and he's retiring after 38 years of teaching at Irvine Valley College, longer than I've been here. And then, Dwayne Main is the executive assistant for the Office of the Vice Chancellor, and she's retiring after 21 years. And Fawn Tan Riverdi is the EOPS Care Calworks Counselor, is retiring after 23 years and nine months. And Fawn was the one that was instrumental in getting Charter 100 to raise all their funds and donate them to the CARE students at Irvine Valley College. And this is millions of dollars donating to these students, and I go to those meetings because I'm a member of that organization, and she really did an incredible amount for these students and for IVC. So, thank you. Thank you, all of you, for all your help. Okay, so, is there a motion and a second, then?
So moved. Second.
Okay, Trustee Jay makes the motion, Trustee Wright seconds it. Madam Secretary, can you call the roll? Trustee Inman?
Aye.
Trustee Jay?
Aye.
Trustee Jamal?
Aye.
Trustee Melchiker?
Aye.
Trustee Prendergast?
Aye.
Trustee Rydel?
Aye.
Trustee Wright?
Aye.
And then, next Classified Personnel Actions, Vice Chancellor Wiscott, is there any changes?
There are no changes, thank you.
Okay, so, Madam Secretary, was there a motion and a second? No?
Second.
Who made the motion?
Oh, I'll make it.
Okay, Trustee Jay made the motion, is there a second?
Trustee Wright seconded.
Oh, Trustee Wright seconded, okay. Madam Secretary, can you call the roll, please? Trustee Inman?
Aye.
Trustee Jay?
Aye.
Trustee Jamal?
Aye.
Trustee Melchiker?
Aye.
Trustee Prendergast?
Aye.
Trustee Rydel?
Aye.
Trustee Wright?
Aye.
And the next item is Non-Bargaining Unit Actions, and, Vice Chancellor Wiscott, are there any changes?
There are no changes, thank you.
Now, the noteworthy thing on this is that three-time Olympic gold medal winner Misty May Trainer is volunteering in Irvine Valley College's beach volleyball athletic program. So, the volunteers are in this program, so that's very exciting. I'd love to be notified when she's going to be volunteering, so I could see her and our beach volleyball team at work. That's exciting at Irvine Valley College. So, is there a motion and a second?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, thank you. So, if Trustee Jay makes the motion, and then Trustee Inman seconds it. Madam Secretary, can you call the roll? Trustee Inman?
Aye.
Trustee Jay?
Aye.
Trustee Jamal?
Aye.
Trustee Melchiker?
Aye.
Trustee Prendergast?
Aye.
Trustee Rydel?
Aye.
Trustee Wright?
Aye.
Okay, then the annual report on first-year probationary faculty, and they're listed in the board agenda, I don't have to read them. So, these are first-year probationary faculty. Is there a motion and a second?
So moved.
Trustee Jamal makes the motion and second.
Second.
Trustee Jay seconds it. Madam Secretary, can you call the roll, please?
Trustee Inman?
Aye.
Trustee Jay?
Aye.
Trustee Jamal?
Aye.
Trustee Melchiker?
Aye.
Trustee Prendergast?
Aye.
Trustee Rydel?
Aye.
Trustee Wright?
Aye.
And the next one is the annual report on second-year probationary faculty. Is there a motion and a second? Do trustee Jay want to make the motion?
So moved.
And trustee Inman, you want a second?
Second.
Second, okay.